I see. So it is recording. So it is seven o'clock. This is Sarah Melish, Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I'll call the meeting to order on February 17. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask all members of the public to go unmuted at this time to eliminate the feedback. We have a packed agenda tonight. I plan to change the order a little from what was in the agenda because I would like to take care of some items that I don't think will take very long, and we'll be doing two harbor at the end. So the first item, and I'm the chair, and on the call are full-time members, John Benares, Brian Solacy, James Mitchell, and Catherine Howe, along with two alternates, Jim Dietrich and Sean Zahn. Zahn, sorry, Sean. The five full-time members will be voting on the applications tonight. In order for relief to be granted to the applicant, four of the five members must vote in favor of it. So we're going to begin the meeting with with five continued applications. The applicant has requested that we continue these applications. So until April, the April 28th meeting, he's been meeting with the Butters and hopes to have revised plans by then. So I will make a motion to, at the request of the applicant, to continue the applications of Benaba LLC for special permits under section 6.1.2 and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, and/or other relief as may be necessary to alter and expand existing non-conforming, single-family structures, setbacks, building heights, four-area location, parking and lot coverages by structure and impervious materials in accordance with the plans submitted with the application at 1 San Piper Lane, Assessors Map 1, Lot Number 65 in District G, 3 San Piper Lane, Assessors Map 1, Lot Number 66 in District G, 5 San Piper Lane, Assessors Map Number 1, Lot Number 67 in District G, 7 San Piper Lane, Assessors Map Number 1, Lot Number 71 in District G, and 9 San Piper Lane, Assessors Map 1, Lot Number 70 in District G, all filed with the town clerk on December 16, 2020. Do I have a second? James Mitchell, seconds. Are there any questions from the board? Okay. And I should say that we will be continuing this from February 17, 2021, to April 28, 2021. And to delay the board's deadline for filing the decision concerning the applications and Mr. Brown, if you're on, you had asked for May 26, 2021. I would like to extend that out to June 30. Since there'll be six decisions to write, is that acceptable?
That is acceptable. Thank you.
Okay. So we will delay the, we extend the deadline for filing the decisions till June 30, 2021. If there are no other discussion from the board, I'll take a roll call vote. Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Yes. James Mitchell?
Yes.
Catherine Howe?
Yes.
John Benares?
Yes.
Sarah Melish, yes. So that is continued. Mr. Brown, can you just send me a new form with that revised date on it, and then I'll sign it and send it back to you?
I will as soon as I get off the meeting tonight.
Oh, I'm sure that will be soon. The next, we're now going to move to the three new applications for this month. And the first one we will consider is at 16 Overledge Road. So I will open the discussion on the application of Montserrat Verolange for a special permit under section 6.1.2, 7.5.2, and 4.1.10F of the zoning bylaw, and/or other relief as may be necessary to construct a new in-ground gunite swimming pool at 16 Overledge Road, Assessors Map Number 5, Lot Number 32, in District C, filed with the town clerk on January 19, 2021. Is the applicant here to give us a brief explanation of the project?
Yes, this is Montserrat. Good evening, everybody. We've submitted all the documents. I think the pool constructor is also here, so again, maybe he can provide a more specific explanation, but yeah, this is very straightforward. We are asking for permission to build a pool in our property within, obviously, the confines of the property, and maybe Raymond, do you want to provide a more detailed explanation? I wasn't sure the extent to which I have to describe the project. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that one of the questions that rose on the site visit, it appeared to us as if they'd, if it may require blasting, was wondering the extent to which the blasting would be required, and if you have been in contact with any of your
Yes, correct. It's going to be blasted, and I
I'm sorry. Review yourself. This is my husband, Antonio Perez.
I'm sorry, yeah. I'm sorry, they are going to do blast. We contacted, what is his name? Eddie, Eddie something, I forgot, but he's very good. He has very good reputation, and he told me what it needs to be done.
And he wanted to he wanted the West Gloucester area, so he's pretty local.
And also, we have to cut some trees before the blasting.
How many trees?
Like, two, 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 two trees, two trees, very small ones, like two big trees and two small ones. I mean, the small ones are very small. I mean, I could cut them myself.
Do any members of the board have questions of the applicant?
I'm good.
Sarah, I have one question.
Yes.
When we were there at the site visit on Saturday, the existing requested and zoning requirement conditions table had not been completely filled out. Was that submitted, and is it now complete?
Yes, I did have on Monday. I'm not sure it made it to you, but it was submitted on Sunday night.
Yeah. I did receive it. I may have not forwarded.
Thank you.
I thought I saw it.
Okay, but it wasn't compliant.
Yes.
Sarah, who asked that question?
James Mitchell.
Thank you.
Yeah, for members of the board, since Gail is on the phone and she can't see you, if you make sure you just give your name whenever you're going to speak, that will be helpful to her. Any other questions?
This is Catherine Howe. Sarah, Sarah, do you know what those numbers, are you, are you saying that they were all met the zoning requirements?
Yes. Yes.
I'm gonna trust you.
Yeah, they weren't even close. Okay.
Sarah, I have another question. It's James again.
Sure.
I don't think we really had a chance to review at the site visit concerning the typical pool application requirements of fencing and low-level lighting. Has that been discussed in their application or reviewed?
Let's ask the applicant those questions.
Well, we have, I have met, I haven't, I don't think, have we submitted the documents, but we definitely have a proposal and a plan and a budget from Patriot Fence, you know, for your review. Raymond, did
Yeah, the lights, I think they're soaking in the new material that we sent. Talks out the lights, and they are not visible by the neighbors. They don't, you know, I don't think they will bother.
The pool lights are all low voltage, so hi, I'm Raymond, the pool guy. So, from South Shore, how you doing? The pool lights are all low voltage, and the fence is going to be 48 inches compliant, self-latching.
Any other questions from the board?
It's James again. I have one last question. Has the, have the plans been reviewed with the neighbors, and are the neighbors, are there any neighbors not in approval, or is this being viewed as acceptable by the neighbors?
Yeah, I called each of our bucket neighbors one by one and told them about the project, so everybody's been very supportive.
Anything else? Raymond, did you want to speak again? Your hand's up. Are you finished?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. When I got here, I raised my hand, and I didn't put it down. My fault.
No problem.
But I'm good. I've got nothing. I think it's a pretty cutting, driving.
Okay. I will make a motion. I move to approve the application of Montserrat Verolange for a special permit under section 6.1.2, 7.5.2, and 4.1.10F of the zoning bylaw, and/or other relief as may be necessary to construct a new in-ground gunite swimming pool and spa at 16 Overledge Road, Assessors Map Number 5, Lot Number 32, in District C, filed with the town clerk on January 19, 2021. Based on a finding that the spool and spa, which are accessory to the dwelling, are in harmony with the purpose and intent of this bylaw, and will not be detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood, and has met all the requirements for the grant of the special permit based on the condition that you use low-voltage lighting, four-foot fencing, and that coverage by structures and impervious surface does not exceed 25% of the lot area, and further that the proposed pool is constructed in accordance with the following plans and documents designed by Calmia Design, revised 12/3/2020, Pool Spa Patio and Landscaping Boundary and Partial Topographical Survey, prepared by Calmia Design, dated January 12, 2021. Do I have a second? James Mitchell, seconds. Any discussion from the board? You good, Catherine?
You look cute.
Must be Catherine.
I was muted. It wasn't me this time.
Are you okay?
I'm fine.
Okay. John, you're okay?
Yes.
Okay. Then I will move to a vote, a roll call vote. John Benares?
Approved.
Catherine Howe?
Approved.
James Mitchell?
Approved.
Brian Solacy? Sarah Melish is approved. So the special permit is granted. It will expire in two years if construction is not meant prior to that date. We will be, we have 90 days within which to write the decision. We hopefully do that sooner than that, and after we file the decision, there is a twenty-day appeal period.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you.
Next new application we're going to consider is
Sarah, this is Catherine.
Yes.
You want me to write that decision?
Oh, thank you. Yes, Catherine. Who would like to review it?
I'll review it.
Who was that?
James beat me again, so.
I'll review it.
I seem to be hesitant.
Is it going to be James or Brian reviewing it?
I'll review it.
Who's that?
James. I really didn't want to do it. I just thought I'd offer.
The way my computer is, I'm not seeing everyone, unfortunately. I'm sure it's the user, not the the software. Okay. The next application we're going to consider is the application for 195 Summer Street. So we'll open that application of, the application of Hancock Associates Deborah L. Colbert PE for a special permit under section 6.1.2, 7.5.2, and 4.1.10F of the zoning bylaw, and/or other relief as may be necessary to construct a new poolhouse spa and swimming pool to replace the asphalt tennis court at 195 Summer Street, Assessors Map Number 12, Lot Number 1, in District E, filed with the town clerk on January 20, 2021. Is there somebody here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, hello, Deb Colbert with Hancock Associates. Good evening, everyone. Our client is proposing to add a swimming pool and spa where there's an existing tennis court. If you'd like, I can share a screen to show you what is proposed, or if everyone has a copy here to answer any questions that you may ask. Currently, we are designing the entire pool and spa to have an automatic cover so as to meet the state regulations. There will be very low lighting around the poolhouse. I believe there's only four lights on the poolhouse, and then there will be some lighting in the pool. The nearest neighbor is well over, and over 500 feet away, and not in any viewpoint of the pool itself.
And am I correct that you're retaining the shrubbery along the ocean edge?
Yes, we are. Yep, we're trimming, and we are also increasing shrubbery and around the pool itself, and as a buffer to the neighbors' yards.
For the, John and Catherine that didn't make the site visit, this was a property containing 28 acres, so it is relatively isolated.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought the closest neighbor was in England.
It's always good to have a good sense of humor. Thank you, Brian.
Other questions from the board?
This is James. I have a question. And this is regarding the permit site plan labeled C1. And what I'm looking at is a 30-foot delineation of a no-disturb zone, and then a 50-foot no-disturb or no-build zone, and it looks like if you follow the trajectory of this no-disturb zone, it intersects the pool in the half of the pool that's closest to the ocean. Can you just explain, further explain? Are you allowed to build a pool in a no-disturb zone? Would be my question to the engineer.
We are meeting with Conservation Commission next week to discuss the installation of the pool within the 30-foot and the 50-foot. We're actually improving the situation that's currently there. It's a very degraded tennis court, and replacing that with with the pool and with shrubbery and landscape and grass. So we're actually improving the area that is sensitive to the coastal bank. It is our belief that because we are reducing the amount of impervious by over 2,500 square feet, and that we are actually improving the landscape and protection of the coastal bank, that we believe that the Conservation Commission will allow this work. We do not have approval as of today.
Okay, and Sarah, my question would be to you. If we were to approve this application this evening, would we make it contingent upon the Conservation Commission's approval of building in that zone?
No, because we can't predicate our decision based on whether another board needs to decide, but if the conservation did not approve it as submitted to us, the applicant would need to come back before us with new plans reflecting what was approved by the Conservation Commission.
Okay, so it's going to happen as a matter of course, anyway.
Right, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian, do you have anything?
Nothing. No, I'm good.
John?
No, I'm okay.
Catherine? You're on mute.
I need just a minute, Sarah. One sec.
Okay. It's that darn two-year-old. We'll be back in a second, folks.
Sorry, guys. My only question is whether last time I looked, I didn't think you could have a automatic safety cover in lieu of a fence.
According to the state regulations, we're allowed to do that?
So can you, can you point me to that? Because I just looked those up the other day for a separate project, and I didn't see an exception.
Believe it's noted on the plan. It is not. I will need to get that for you.
There is a deer fence around the property.
Yes, there is.
But I'm not, I'm assuming that doesn't qualify as a fence for a pool.
Well, the goal for the fence, obviously, is to keep children out and to protect, to keep neighbors out. So the deer fence is going, you know, the property is 28 acres, and the closest neighbor, I believe, you know, is, even though the property line is 20 feet away, about 50 feet away, the closest neighbor is over 500 feet away. And then with the automatic cover, they're protecting anyone on property that lives at the property. There's only one way in and one way out to the property, and that is also monitored.
And how does an automatic cover work?
Hi, you push a button, and it covers the pool and locks it down so that no one can access it.
So it's not automatic. It requires a human intervention. That's what I was wondering.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know that. I didn't know they made them fully automatic. Any other questions from the board?
This is James again. If Catherine has a question about the the fence, it also looks like that existing deer fence is seven to eight feet high.
Right. Yep. And it goes all the way around the property, including the slope down to the ocean.
Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on this application? If so, would you please raise your hand? Seeing none, move to make a motion. I move to approve the application of Hancock Associates Deborah L. Colbert PE for a special permit under section 6.1.2, 7.5.2, and 4.1.10F of the zoning bylaw, and/or other relief as may be necessary to construct a new poolhouse spa and swimming pool to replace the asphalt tennis court at 195 Summer Street, Assessors Map Number 12, Lot Number 1, in District E, filed with the town clerk on January 20, 2021. Based on a finding that the pool spa and pool house, which are accessory to the dwelling, are in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, will not be detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood, and has met all the requirements for the grant of a special permit provided the proposed spool spa and poolhouse are constructed in accordance with the following documents and plans prepared by Hancock Associates, C1 ZBA Permit Site Plan dated 1/19/2020, A1.1 First Floor 2010 Pool House Project Prepared by Katherine Truman Architects on January 15, 2021, A2.0 Exterior Elevation 2010 Pool House Project Prepared by Katherine Truman Architects on January 15, 2021, based on, and based on the condition that the automatic pool cover and/or deer fence meet the state requirements of fencing required around. Do I have a second?
Second.
James Mitchell, seconds. Any comments from the board?
No.
Catherine, did that condition satisfy your concern?
Yes, I'm not, yes, it did. Because my primary concern is not, it sounds like this is very isolated, but you know, I don't approve things that are not in accordance with state code, so thanks.
Then I will move to a roll call vote. James Mitchell?
Approved, yes.
John Benares?
Yes, approved.
Brian Solacy? Brian? Catherine Howe?
Approved, yes.
Are you on, Brian? Wake up. Brian Solacy? Sarah votes in favor, so the special permit is granted on a vote of four to zero. Brian did not vote.
Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time and your effort on this board and have a nice night.
Thank you.
Bye.
I'm now gonna move to one forty four Summer Street.
Sarah, I can write that one, by the way.
Oh, geez. Thank you, John. John, go write it. Who are you doing? Brian? Oh, he's gone. I'll review it. Okay, John?
John, say.
Okay. Now I'm gonna move to one forty four Summer Street. So we will take into consideration the application of Steve and Jenny Athenas for a variance under section five point four of the zoning bylaw with regard to side setback, lot coverage by structure, lot and lot coverage by impervious surface and or other relief as may be necessary to construct a two-story addition on an existing non-conforming lot at one forty four Summer Street. Assessors map number thirty nine, lot number fifty six in District A filed with the town clerk on January twentieth twenty twenty one. Mr. Athenas, are you gonna speak on the application or?
I am. Just just briefly, thank you. Very quickly, we are trying to put a small modest twelve by twenty two two-story addition on our existing lot. Andrew Crocker is our architect and he can go through more of the details here in a second. I am ver- we are very much aware um of some of the uh Conservation Committee uh questions that they may have, and we are in the process of uh working with them and an environmental engineer to appease those issues. But I don't have anything on that tonight. That's obviously for a different meeting. That's in essence the gist of the project, and I'll I'll turn it over to Andrew, who can give you more details.
Thank you. Andrew Crocker?
Thank you, Stephen, um and the board. Thanks for taking our application out of order. It's always nice to get out early if possible. The just a quick note, I hope you all had a chance to review the documents that went with the application, a little bit about the structure and the Athenases are a family of of four that live in in the existing house that uh this is built on slab. It does not have any storage in the basement or in the attic. Um and currently their main storage area is in a garage space. Um and they are in the need of an extra bedroom and additional storage space and a larger family room for the kids who um you know are getting older and need more space. The proposed addition is pretty modest. It's uh five hundred square feet on two floors, basically extending the main block of the building. And the the site is a small lot in relationship to the zoning requirements for that district. It's about half of what's required, um which makes it difficult to meet all of the dimensional requirements for that zoning district. You'll note from one of the drawings, I tried to show that this area of District A is made up of quite a number of old buildings, old lots that you know are much closer to the dimension requirements of the general district and some of the other less restrictive districts in Manchester. Two of the other restrictions of this of the site, there are wetlands on two sides of the site, which restrict any construction except for on this side of the building. There's also a right-of-way that runs up to a house up on Herald Street that needs to be kept open, which requires another accommodation. So to build this addition, we will need to push into the side setback roughly five feet. We'll need five foot of relief, but in actuality, because of the geometry of the site and the building, only a smart portion of the building will actually be in that setback. I don't have a calculation with a square foot is, but uh it's the the front and the back corner. We'll stick into that setback. And so I think for for those reasons, uh well, let me let me let me address a little bit of the lot coverage issue. The the reason that we're violating the lot coverage by impervious surface is because the existing driveway was paved at one point with asphalt paving, and during this process, we realized that that probably should have been permitted. It was not. And so as we go through the Conservation Commission, we need to determine whether we can retroactively permit for that excess coverage or whether we'll have to demolish portions of it to bring us in line with the coverage for impervious surface. So hoping is that you'll grant us approval and that we will not have to tear it out. We may have to regardless, uh based on what the Conservation Commission says, but we hope that we can mitigate any adverse impact that that driveway has. And I think that pretty much covers it. If there's any questions, I'm happy to to answer it or if there's if I need to social more drawings, I can do that as well.
Yeah, this is Sarah Malo. I guess it seems to me that you're looking for a lot of relief. I get the five feet into the setback. That's a small piece of the building, of the structure. And you're looking for coverage by structures to exceed the fifty fif- fifteen percent up to sixteen point seven five. I would be reluctant to both to grant both of those relief in both of the those areas plus the the coverage by structure and and impervious surface, because it seems to me that there's water issues there, and that seemed to me that there was a capability to eliminate some of that asphalt and get that coverage down to thirty percent, rather than thirty six point six. I don't know what you think about that.
I I think that whatever um that the conservation will require us to mitigate for any runoff that happens between the fifty foot and the hundred foot. So we'll have to mitigate in some respects. Um if not, we'll have to tear it all out. Currently, where the with the addition is proposed, currently, there's an asphalt covered there, so the building shouldn't should actually improve the water issue, because we'll be capturing any runoff from the roof and bringing it down to the existing drywall system. But certainly, um the water water runoff is an issue and and we plan to address that.
This is Stephen Athenas again. Was the question that was just raised, are we willing to mitigate and become compliant with the impervious surface that we have currently on the property? And if the answer to that is yes, we're absolutely willing to do that. And you know, if we can appease the wetlands, the Conservation Committee, the flooding from the neighbors, all of that without ripping it up, that would be great. But if we need to, um that's entirely part of our plan. And we're well aware of that.
Right, but it's not just conservation. So you're asking the zoning Board of Appeals to give you a variance because the asphalt paving was never approved. And you're asking us for a variance of coverage by structures and impervious surface that exceeds um the allowable amount by over six percent, whereas the structures are only over by one point seven five percent. So it seems like there's a lot of opportunity to remove some of the impervious surface to get it down to the thirty.
Absolutely, and we're willing to do that for sure, is what I was trying to say. Yeah, and I agree with that a hundred percent.
Other members of the board?
Uh Sarah?
Yeah.
Brian Solissey, I'm back. No, I I would be reluctant, uh regardless of what the uh I wouldn't want to wait for the Conservation Commission to make a ruling. I I feel that they they should bring this impervious material back into compliance, and that's that's my um I would that would I would hold to that. I would stick with that.
John?
Yeah, overall, I I think the addition is pretty minimal in scope as far as the scale of it. And I understand, you know, the needs of a growing family. With that said, you know, as as I was hearing this proposal, I was thinking of perhaps, you know, the idea of using uh pavers for the driveway, for instance, just to get that that percentage down, just something to consider, but otherwise, I'm I'm uh I'm in support of this project.
James Mitchell?
Uh yes, this is James. I would be in support of the project if the uh existing non-conforming driveway were replaced with uh an impervious service like pavers or p-stone. That'll make it um much more palatable.
Catherine?
Um, well, I agree that the impervious surface requirements should be brought into compliance, if that is possible. You know, using pavers or whatever. Um you know, there does seem to be some hardship in the way that the lot was zoned and and created in some of these driveways and access points that have to be preserved. So you know, it it does seem like perhaps they can't they can't build this in compliance, so with the setback requirements. And it's not that big of an addition, so um I think I'm I'm in favor of it.
Is there any member of the public that would like to speak?
Yes.
Yes.
My name is Louis Logue. I live at one forty two Summer Street.
Yes.
Um, the to give you a little bit of history, um the property prior to this home being constructed where it is today was a camp. It was not a year-round residence. So the developer of that property had to go for before the board to get the house that sits today to be approved, and it was approved. And after it was approved, um the foundation went in and the foundation was built larger by two feet, by twenty six feet on one side, and an additional twelve by twenty two foot garage was added to the footprint that was approved. At that point, we brought up that to the building inspector. There was a cease and desist order, and they needed to remove those pieces of the foundation. All because of the wetlands and the problems that we had with water prior to this construction. So the house sits today, and the driveway was added afterwards. And subsequent to that, the runoff of that driveway comes into our driveway and puddles and pools uh in our semicircle driveway. So our concern is not only if you approve this project with pavers or crushed stone, we feel that there needs to be a different pitch to the driveway to alleviate the water runoff to come into our property. Can I just address that quickly? And we had we discussed this at the site meeting, and the way I'm looking at the drawings, that paved area is 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 actually not on the property that we're discussing. It's actually on your property. Is that correct? Or does there runoff from the some forty four Summer Street as well? Well, part of that driveway, Mr. Crocker, is on one forty four Summer Street, okay, which was not approved. Okay? Right. And the portion that's on my property was put on my property was I told the owners that you may need permission for that. And that, that's how I left it. I just said I knew the law, the way it was written, the way the decision was written. And the driver was put in also regardless. Okay.
Are you, Louis?
I'm just trying to figure out how to solve um water issues that's not on the property of the applicant and whether it's their responsibility to tear that out if it's not working properly, um or how how it would hold up the proposal this before us now. Because certainly, you know, we can come in compliance with the impervious coverage. But I'm not sure that's gonna solve the water issue on your property unless there was a water mitigation set of circumstances that we would work out with the Conservation Commission, the wetlands engineers, that we would need to engage to deal with with our with the application for the addition.
Can I just say something here? Um just looking at this on a map, it looks like the the nearest asphalt that I'm seeing to one forty two Summer Street is the section where the addition's gonna be constructed. Is that correct? Or is there a driveway that's being hidden by trees? So I guess my my question is, wouldn't that addition kind of mitigate some of this runoff that we're we're talking about here?
There's a driveway out to Summer Street.
Yeah, you're you're right.
Yes.
Is that McCain Way or is there another driveway beyond McCain Way?
It's a this is private property. It's a right-of-way. There's no name. The original home was uh at one forty two. That person owned all the land behind it, and they created the right-of-way to let their relatives build A, the camp, and B, the property that was previously mentioned at Herald Street.
Okay, at two Herald Street, it looks like.
Excellent. Um I don't think so. I think it's a further. I think it's further up.
Okay. So is the runoff coming from McCain Way or is it coming from the actual plot of land where one forty four Summer Street resides?
McCain Way, unfortunately, I think you're off a little bit. McCain Way is another thousand yards up the street.
Okay.
Yeah, Lou, correct me if I'm wrong, but the runoff you're concerned about is coming off of the pavement of the right-of-way that is adjacent to one forty two Summer Street, not one forty four.
The runoff is starting from your paved area, okay, in front of your home by the front door, and then proceeds down the driveway into our driveway.
So as part of our project, we are working on a water plan to help mitigate that.
That'd be great. I mean, I when when we first spoke, when you said you'd like to pave the driveway, actually, you said you were paving the driveway, and I told you, well, this is a right-of-way, and I would like if you're gonna do the driveway to make sure that it gets pitched away from our land, but I don't think that was in the plans.
Yeah, and I apologize for that. I mean, I I did ask you if it made sense to pave it, and you said, I like a hundred percent agree. You said, sure, let's just make sure it pitches the right way, and you know, apparently it wasn't done correctly. I I guess, but I would also tell you that the if you look at that and again, it wasn't done correctly because there was no, we didn't have any professional engineer look at any water mitigation at that point. I was just looking to, to be perfectly honest, to get the piece of stone out of the driveway so my four kids could have a place to ride their bikes. So I didn't really, I didn't think this was that big a deal. But if you look at when it does rain, the other side of that paved driveway away from your property floods as well. It gets very wet up in there as well. So again, I think, I think, and I totally understand your concerns. I guess I would, you know, like to tell you, all the neighbors and the board, that as part of this project, we are going to, you know, have a solution for that one. You know, that I'm assuming some committee, board, whoever, would have to approve before we do it.
And I guess because you're asking for a variance, that's kind of a higher bar. And I would feel a little more comfortable if we continued your application until you have more definitive information on a water mitigation plan and the concerns of the owner of 142 Summer. Would that be reasonable?
It sounds reasonable. I guess I don't know the, this is the first time I've ever done this. What are the timing? I mean, we'd like to get this approved and done as quickly as possible. Are we looking at, you know, a couple of weeks, a couple of months before we can? I mean, I'm going to have the water mitigation plan done very quickly. I was hoping to have it done for tonight, but it just, you know.
I think also, you know, this, the the water issue doesn't really impact the the impervious surface is on 144 that we're permitting for. And I'm not sure how much bearing that has on impervious service on 142.
This is
It's two different issues that I think that we're certainly going to deal with through the Conservation Commission. But as a separate entity, you know, 144, you know, it's, you know, the application is based on 144 in the proposed work. So I'm not sure whether we'll have something that's going to, you know, mitigate all, you know, all of the water on 144. So yeah, I'm just trying to understand what impacts, you know, something that's done on 142 in the past should impact what happens on 144 going forward.
I have another member of the public that would like to speak, so Mary Jo Foerbach.
Hi, this is Mary Jo Foerbach on Five Herald Street. I'm on the other side of the property, so when you're at the house and you're looking towards Herald Street, I am one of the three houses that is right along the property. I just want to mention that, you know, flooding is a serious issue in our neighborhood. When there are large storms, lawns do flood. You know, one of our neighbors has a shed that has been underwater. When this property was brought before the Zoning Board of Appeals approximately 15 years ago, the ZBA spent extensive time looking over the hydrology of the site. And the resulting plans for the house included extensive, extensive engineering to ensure that the sizable increase in lot coverage, which was ultimately approved, would not affect flooding of nearby properties. And so I don't have any opposition to the addition as long as the flooding issues are addressed. I myself did observe increased water behind my house in recent years. I cannot say, yes, this was due to this particular development. There have been a couple of things that have happened in that area. But flooding is an issue. And the jurisdiction of the Concomis for the protection of the wetlands is not necessarily for the protection of the residents and their impacts. So I would just ask that the ZBA carefully ensure that the addition will not exacerbate the flooding works already experienced. And I would hope that the ZBA would bring at a minimum the approval down to what was approved 15 years ago, which was intended to prevent increased flooding to us as neighbors.
Thank you.
Brian Solace. Andrew, when we were at the site, were you discussing, now, as far as stormwater runoff, was that going to go in? There's an existing leaching field, correct? Was that, were you talking about bringing that stormwater into the French drain, as it were?
All of the runoff from the addition will go into a French drain. And as far as the Conservation Commission order of conditions, I'm sure they'll require that as well. The, I think it's more about whether the asphalt driveway is creating more flooding or not. And whether that, you know, should be mitigated or removed entirely.
I guess, this is Sarah again. I guess my concern is that it sounds like asphalt was put on the driveway in violation of the ZBA coverage by structures and impervious surface. And so it was never vetted by a board. And that's why I'm saying it should be taken into consideration as part of this application for variance.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that at all. I guess, I'm, I guess generally speaking, I would ask the question, so I sort of know where we stand here, is, is the zoning board with all of the conditions we're bringing up and the neighbors are bringing up, which I agree are all valid, is their mindset, generally speaking, to approve this project if we are able to correct the pervious surface issues that we have?
This is Sarah. I'm reluctant to approve it at this point without additional information on what's creating the issues with the flooding.
On what's creating the issues.
Right. In other words, we can say reduce it down to 30%, but I don't know if that's going to fix the problem that the neighbor is complaining about. And so I think we need more information, but I'll defer to other members of the board.
This is James Mitchell. Can I make one comment? I'm looking at the drawing labeled L-01. And it's the original drawing on the left side of the page that has the outline of the original structure labeled proposed dwelling. And on that drawing, there are two what look like new leaching chambers that were built when the original structure was built. And no one's made any mention of those. My presumption is that those were conditioned upon stormwater mitigation when the house was first constructed. And my question would be, does the new addition encroach on that leaching chamber? It looks pretty close. And will those two leaching chambers be adequate for the proposed new structure with the new runoff from the roof areas? So again, I would agree with Sarah that we need more information before a decision might be made.
I think the leaching chambers handle what the existing structure, any additional impervious surface will be handled. If we can't determine that those structures can handle what we're proposing, we will just build a new one that we know can handle the additional impervious surface.
That all sounds very plausible, but we need, I guess we need to see the plans in more entirety.
Can I ask you another question?
Yes.
Since there is discussion going back and forth, whether, you know, is this a zoning board of appeals decision or conservation? Are we putting the cart before the horse? Does the conservation has to approve this first before you? No.
No, they are, they are a completely separate board. And they have separate parameters. We have our own parameters to look at. And we're looking at a property where it looks like the last approval required porous paved driveway where there's now asphalt and where the structure is going. And, you know, people are talking about runoff issues. And we're talking about approving a variance of exceeding the minimum coverage by structure. So it's reasonable for us to take in consideration the coverage of impervious surfaces and what impact it's having on the neighborhood. From anything the Conservation Commission's doing.
So for the record, we have also gone before the Zoning Board of Appeals and got approved for an addition that required these leaching, what we call tight tanks. And the water runoff from the gutters had to go into two tanks that were designed by an engineer. Unfortunately, the land that we're sitting on is overwhelmed by marine clay two feet underneath the ground surface. So from, from your grass, you dig under and it's hard to even plant a shrub or a tree until you, when you hit marine clay. These tanks don't let the water mitigate into the outlying groundwater. Marine clay is harder than cement. Water doesn't go through it. So once the tanks fill up, it just sits there and until evaporates. It may dissipate, but it does not dissipate fast.
Thank you. Catherine, what are your thoughts?
Um, after, you know, hearing some of the concerns from the public, I think would like a more detailed, to see a more detailed mitigation plan before I would approve this. But with that, you know, depending on how that plan comes forward, it may be acceptable to me. But I'd like to see a little bit more in writing about that, the mitigation before approving this. That personal preference.
So Mr. Athenas, it does not appear as if we have a sufficient number of members of the board that would vote favorably tonight.
Yeah, and I understand the reasons why, and I get it. And I think it's very reasonable, like you said, I don't know, maybe 10, 15 minutes ago, to let us get our information for the mitigation plan together and come back in front of you. I guess my next question would be, how quickly can we do that?
Our next meeting is March 24th.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So pull back too many papers here. At the request of the applicant, I make a motion to continue the application of Steve and Jenny Athenas for variance under Section 5.4 of the zoning bylaw with regard to side setback lot coverage by structure and lot coverage by impervious surface. Now, the relief is maybe necessary to construct a two, three addition on existing non-conforming lot at 144 Summer Street, Assessors Map Number 39, Lot Number 56 in District A, filed with the town clerk on January 20th, 2021. And the extent, we will extend it to the next ZBA meeting to be held on March 24th. And I'll need to send that to you to sign off on that. Okay, okay. Thank you. Oh, I need a second.
Second. Brian.
I'll take a roll call vote. Catherine Howe?
In favor, yes.
John Bananas?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
James Mitchell?
Yes.
Sarah Melish, yes. So we'll continue it to March 24th.
Thank you very much for all your help.
Okay. I don't have to have anybody write it. We are now going to move to the continued application of Two Harbor Street. We had a lot of public input at our last meeting. We have received 25 additional letters since our January meeting, all of which do not support the project. The majority of them deal with safety, parking, rubbish disposal, protection from abutters, and number of bedrooms. Some people have expressed concern it would open the door for existing single-family homes to be converted into multifamily homes. That's inaccurate. A single-family home, an existing single-family home in a residential district cannot receive a variance for a change of use to a multifamily. So I will open again the application of Nicholas Herrera's Mac Holding Services LLC for a special permit under Section 6.1.2 and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw. And the other relief is maybe necessary to alter, expand, or change an existing non-conforming hotel slash inn and single-family residential dwelling used to a non-conforming six-unit multifamily and single-family dwelling used in accordance with the plans at Two Harbor Street, Assessors Map Number 1, Lot Number 65 in District E, filed with the town clerk on December 16th, 2020. And I also would like to respond to some other comments made saying that going from to that if you have an existing non-conforming use to change it, it requires a variance. It does not, under our bylaws, a non-conforming use, an applicant may make an application through a special permit to change that use as long as it is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. So that's what we're looking at. The applicant has submitted new plans with fewer units and less required parking from the original. We will have the applicant explain those changes. And then the board will discuss with the applicant, the possibility of creating additional changes with respect to bedroom count, parking plan, adjustments to eliminate backing on to Harbor Street or Bridge Street, screening for direct abutters, outdoor space for use by residents, and the plan for dealing with refuse. Once the board has concluded those conversations with the applicant, I will enter into the record the 25 letters we've received by stating the date they were written and the person who wrote them. The actual paper copies will be in our physical records at Town Hall. I will not be reading each letter into, into the record tonight because it's going to take us several hours. And then I will see public input specifically related to the items we've discussed regarding potential changes, looking for additional suggested improvements. I find it would be unlikely that we would reach a decision tonight. So we're really trying to look at this requested project and figure out if there's ways to tweak it to make it acceptable. Okay, so who will speak on the changes in the plans?
Well, I think I'll start with the introduction. Board members, I'm Russ Brown from a Texas Brown Pigeon, and I represent Nick Herrera with respect to this application. Pigeon, and I represent Nick Haras with respect to this application. As you might remember, uh, the application came before you for six two-bedroom units, a conversion from a current current. Eleven-unit uh inn with a two-bedroom house in the rear. Uh, converting the eleven-room uh inn to. Six two-bedroom apartments. And although that application appeared to be well received by this board, uh, there was considerable. Opposition from the neighbors. And Mr. Haras, uh. Although there was support from this board, I I, as I remember, he was anxious to meet with the neighbors and appease some of their concerns, so. Um, he's come back with a plan. As you can see, that's a considerable concession on his part. And he's doing that in the interest of uh being a good neighbor since he plans to live in that little red house up behind the end. And uh wants to be well received by his neighbors. It's important to him. So we've got a new plan before the board. It stated February fifth, uh, February fifth, I believe, two thousand twenty-one, new floor plans and a new site plan. In summary, the new plan calls for three, three-bedroom units. Which is um a considerable decrease in density. And a decrease in the parking requirement. So now we fall into the parking requirement regulations that the town does provide for. For all three of those units and including the house up behind the parking requirement for Manchester's only six. And so uh we are going down in the number of cars that are going to be functioning on this lot. I know there's been was discussion that at the last meeting that uh the inn, because it. Over the last few years has been operated in a way where it's not. Used to the, you know, maximum capacity, but you know, I do believe that the inn, because it's grandfathered as eleven-unit inn. It does have the potential for having eleven separate rooms with eleven separate cars, so. We feel that this is a considerable decrease and is going to alleviate. It's a for sure a move in the right direction. With respect to parking and traffic, traffic was also a big concern because there's a. You know, it's been clearly established by other letters that there's a dangerous corner there and. And nobody disputes that. So this is a big step in the right direction and hope that's going to be positively received by the neighbors. And um. The details are in the are in the plans. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to see those plans, but it's essentially we're amending the petition. Uh, and asking for an approval in accordance with the new site plan dated February fifth. And approval for a conversion from the current use to three, three-bedroom residential units.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Um, I would also state that there's been a lot of conversation. Among neighbors about the fact that this is a seasonal inn. Um, I did look at the licenses granted by. The Board of Selectmen, and I don't feel, I don't find that there's any restriction. On the use of the old corner inn, so it appears as if it could be used three hundred and sixty-five days a year. They also hold a common victual's license, which means they can serve food. Multiple times during the day, and I don't see that the license is restricted as to being able to service only the people who stay in that room, those rooms. It seems to be a pretty generic license. So to some extent, we have to look at. The current allowed use versus the proposed new use. Um, when we're considering whether it's more injurious or detrimental to the neighborhood.
Hi, Sarah. Can I um, can I chime in for a second?
Sure.
Hi, everybody. Uh, I am not Melanie. It's Nick Haras. How's everybody doing? Uh, so it's been a, it's been a little bit of a rough ride. I've I've taken a a lot of input. I've tried to give as much information as possible to as many people that are willing to listen. I've uh, I've taken the feedback. I've taken the feedback that I I've taken the feedback that I didn't like. The feedback that I agreed with, the feedback that I didn't agree with. I reached out to as many people as I possibly could and got as many opinions as I possibly could. Um. What I'm attempting to do in the actual in itself. Is to is to change that in on the inside. I'm not going to touch the outside. At all. I'd like it to keep the same look and feel that it has. With three units that I think I'm going to attempt to be very high-end units. Um, with, that's what, that's the best thing for me to do. Um, the parking that I had on top, I reduced to four spaces on the top. And the four spaces that are in the back were always there. So I reduced the amount of parking potential that could possibly be there. In addition to that, I've also uh put in a provision for a safety fence along the contour of one twenty-seven that would. In some ways help mitigate the safety or make it more visible. I um, I didn't make the corner. The corner's always been there. It's always been dangerous. I think there'd be less cars coming in and out under this particular plan. Not everyone's going to agree. Not everybody is going to um. Not everyone is going to be psyched. I'm trying to make everybody happy. That's never possible. I'm doing my very best. This is the plan that I really would like to go with, which is the three luxury units, the carriage house in the back that I will live in, the owner occupied. Um, I have everything that of all the conversations that I've had, I've had great conversations. I've also had some conversations that were. Like just honest conversations where people just were unhappy, don't want the change, don't like it, and I was told that in certain terms, we don't want it. I can understand that. Um, what I don't appreciate was that in one case, after the last meeting where I. Like, as if I wasn't shaken enough to the last meeting or didn't hear enough uh negative things, I got a call immediately after the meeting. From somebody who was on the meeting who, I'm not going to mention names, who told me, under no uncertain terms. Hey, Nick, how are you? I go, um, just so you know, nobody wants you here. This project's never going to happen. And just so you know, I'm the neighborhood's behind me and we have financial backing to fight you for as long as we have to. And this person was very cavalier about letting me know that they did not want it, they didn't like it, but didn't have to worry about it, that somebody else was going to back them up. And that's fine. I can appreciate that, but I will say it's kind of gross to call somebody after ZBA meeting. Where I'm trying as hard as I possibly can to appease everybody, do something that's good for myself and have to listen to that immediately afterwards. No. My attorney told me, don't say anything. I'm sorry. I did my very best. I'm doing my very best. And I hope that we can get through this meeting. I hope I can get the backing of the people around me because I'm trying to do a very, very good thing. My opinion. Thank you very much. I won't talk anymore.
Thank you, Nick.
I find that hard to believe.
I'm sorry.
You know, so let me run through some of the things that I was questioning, okay, when I saw this revised plan. One is, it looks to me that. You're saying there are ten existing bedrooms and you're going to eleven. That's what's written down here. Um, which gives me pause.
Sarah, there's a, there's only nine bedrooms. It's three, three, it's three, three unit. The three, three-bedroom units, which goes from the twelve they had proposed down to nine.
How many are in the residents next door? The carriage house?
Two.
Well, so what you've given us doesn't make sense because it says it's. The existing main housing carriage house, and it says there's a total of ten bedrooms, and it says under the proposed main housing carriage. House you're going to eleven.
There's already. Excuse me. There's already twelve bedrooms in the inn because there's also the innkeeper suite and there's two bedrooms in the innkeeper suite. So the house itself are, the inn itself has twelve bedrooms. There are two bedrooms in the carriage house. That would be a total of fourteen bedrooms for the entire property. I'm reducing the bedrooms in the old corner inn. From the twelve bedrooms that it had to three, three-bedroom units, so a total of nine bedrooms in the inn.
If I, if I may, Chairman, the plans do appear to be incorrect. I did notice really just tonight. That the bedroom counts are off and that 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 will have to be corrected.
Okay. The the other question I had was with respect to the parking. There's only four, six spots required, and you have eight.
Correct.
The the four spots in front of the red carriage house. Are set up in a way that it forces backing into Harbor Street, which if you eliminated two of them, you could have a three-point turn. Um, the other question would be on the parking in the front block. It looks like the fence is set up in a way that all of the cars would be exiting across the stop line and pedestrian. Walk, and I'm wondering if there's a way to reconfigure. The parking and to have, and I don't know anything about parking, but to have more like a circle type thing where it forces people to come in. And out closer to the inn and forces them to go in one direction so you don't have people backing. Um, because that's certainly what we're hearing loud and clear is backing into the street.
And I I hear you loud and clear, but under the, under the existing conditions, there's no provisions for any type of safety whatsoever. If the, if the inn is busy and if there are cars up there, they can come in and out anywhere they want, and there's no safety whatsoever. Having four cars that are there all the time that can only park in that top lot, they're going to be able to get out of there because they understand it. And they're going to be. Permanent residents. They're not going to be transients, have no idea how to do it. So they're going to get. Used to it and understand it. Sure, is there maybe a better plan for four cars up in that lot with safety? I'm not going to tell you that I have all the answers, and I'm willing to listen if anybody has a better solution, but four spots in that spot. I don't think is over. It's, I don't think it's four cars is too many cars for that particular lot based on its size, based on how it's been used before.
And I guess I'm suggesting maybe you can reconfigure it to avoid backing to Harbor Street.
Oh, sure.
And and the other thing is. Is there a possibility to put some screening between the red carriage house and the apartment?
Of course, as much as they want.
What do other board members have to contribute to this conversation?
Uh, I can start, you know, uh, first of all, I'm just very disappointed to hear that um. The applicant was harassed after the last meeting. I feel like he came as this prepared and transparent with neighbors. I think all too often we we see a lot of developers or 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 neighbors that they come into these things very unprepared and they. Very secretive and sneaky about things. I think this applicant has done the right thing by reaching out to the neighborhood. And and looking for people's opinions and and also offering to to revisit the the scope of work. Um, at the last meeting, so you know, it's just disappointing me here that that happened. Uh, with that said, you know, I appreciate that he he scaled down the project. That uh, some of these concerns have been addressed. And uh, I just think it's a good uh adaptive reuse of this of this space from an inn to three. Uh, units. So uh, I'm in support of the scope as it as it currently stands. Thank you.
Sarah, who was that, please?
John Bananas.
John Bananas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, John.
Uh, Brian, your thoughts?
Uh. Uh, I'm I'm in agreement with John. I think that uh. The the project itself as submitted. I I I liked the project last month uh with six uh. The six units, and I like it much better now with just three units. Uh, I understand that there's a lot of concern or a lot of talk about traffic safety. But I'll be honest with you, without to sound too callous. There's a lot of talk of it. Uh, I've lived in town for for twenty-five years now. Uh, is there a rash of accidents that are happening right there that I'm unaware of at the corner of Harbor and uh one twenty-seven? Uh, until I see, until until there's there's real data there to support it. Uh, I I I like the, uh, you know, I I I'm very concerned with traffic and safety, but I think that the uh. By having an inn where people who aren't familiar with that area and traffic-wise. Is it be more of a of a hindrance and more of a concern than if you've got full-time residents living there. Who are totally aware of the traffic patterns and are who are more concerned with their coming and going. I I think it's a good project. I think that the applicant has done a good job repurposing the uh, the site. And uh, as he said, you're not going to please everyone all the time, but I think that he's done, gone uh. Above and beyond and trying to uh. To facilitate that. So that's just my feelings.
And can we just all agree that in general, people need to drive more carefully, whether you're driving down School Street. Summer Street, Plodden Street, Pine Street. People just need to drive more carefully. And so. That's it. I mean, I, in my opinion, my my street's a dangerous street as well, and and when I back out of my driveway, I have to be careful. So that's all I'm going to say about that.
James Mitchell?
I'm I'm sorry. Can I just, I'm sorry. I I wasn't planning on participating. There are a lot of very interested people in this, but I have to say. That you guys don't live in this intersection. This is a dangerous intersection.
Mr. Lewis.
I I know it's ill-conceived, okay, and you guys are being very.
I have not opened it up to a public comment yet.
Fine, okay.
Uh, listen, I cross that street five times, six times a week as well. I I'm very much aware of that intersection. Thank you.
Um, James Mitchell?
Um, yes. You know, originally I wanted to support this project and I've I've had a little bit of a change of heart with respect to, I I read all the letters. I was just amazed at how many people came out. Not approving this project and for very good and sound reasons. There's some very compelling arguments. About safety and traffic and congestion and just the hazard that both one twenty-seven and that Y intersection presents. And I don't think that that's going to go away regardless of um. The number of cars as presently proposed. What I would like to see before I can make an informed decision. Is what Sarah alluded to, our chair, I'd like to see a better plan for traffic entering and leaving. From the lot closest to one twenty-seven, and maybe it's a circular, semi-circular drive or where there's a clear point of entry. Further up Harbor Street with a single point coming out, some fencing along one twenty-seven. I'd also like to see whatever might be proposed for the the immediate abutter in terms of screening and fencing. Um, I think we need more of a um. A traffic mitigation plan or design that would allow the neighbors to have their their questions and concerns, which I think are valid. Uh, addressed. Uh, I do appreciate the scale being basically cut in half. And I think the three units there would be far more appropriate ultimately, uh, but I I really can't make a decision until I have more information on the the items I've just mentioned.
Catherine?
Um, I appreciate the changes that have been made to this plan. I do not feel that three luxury condos are. Going to be detrimental to the neighborhood. I don't feel like they are going to be not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. I think it's it's a beautiful old building. I like that. Um, it's going to be. Uh, fixed up and become habitable again instead of just sitting there and looking. Gaudi. Um. I appreciate the concerns about the parking, and I know that that's a dangerous intersection. I see that the applicant has already. Um, made some changes in reducing the number of parking spaces. Um, I. Agree that, you know, perhaps um further conversation, you know, about a careful parking design. Um, maybe even consider, you know. How many spaces you really need permanently at this place? I mean, you know, maybe you don't need. To have eight spaces. Um, you know, you could have some sort of system where people with two, you know, with, maybe you don't need to have eight permanent spaces. Maybe you have a guest space or something that's left open most of the time. I don't know.
Catherine, okay, on that note, I'm sorry to interrupt you. So I only need to have six spaces. For the plan. I have eight spaces as it shows right now. I only need six. I put in eight because that would give two spots. Per unit, which would, which would be the spot someone would have for their second car or their guest. Uh, I heard last time people were discussing parking and they, well, where are the guests going to park? Where is this person going to park? So by reducing the number of units, I'm also, I also don't have, that also reduces. That also reduces the number of spots that are required. I have more spots in this plan that are required because I assume someone is gonna have a guest once in a while. So it wasn't just thrown out there to, uh. Throw enough bits less. I thought about it for that particular reason that you mentioned. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Catherine.
Uh, that's okay. Um, and I have heard, um, some concerns. I've heard the concerns of the residents in the letters related to storage space and refuse removal. Um, I'd love to hear what the applicant's, you know, response to those concerns are because I haven't, I haven't heard a response to those yet. Um, overall, I think this is a really appropriate repurposing of the building and I think that. You know, if that intersection is dangerous, then it's dangerous. And maybe we need to put in a rotary like they did at the end of Pine Street and that'll make everybody really happy. But. Um, no, I'm sure we could, that, you know, the town could redesign the intersection. And may need to regardless of this project. Those are my initial opening thoughts.
Okay. Um, I will then. Read into the record. The list of people. Who have sent in letters and then open it up to. Public comment. And these are the letters received since our last ZBA meeting. January. Mid-June. Um. First letter is one dated January 18th. Which apparently was sent to us before the last meeting, but we didn't get into the record. It's from Philo, Philio Wigglesworth Pushing. Of, um, 16 Harbor Street. The next one is from Sean Devaney. Of 18 Harbor Street dated January 18th, 2020. The third is from January 19th, 2021. From Susan and Thomas Durkin of 20 Harbor Street. Next one is from Gar Morris of 11 Jersey Lane dated January 30th, 2021. Next one is from. Is dated January 31st, 2021. From Carol Cabot of One Tux Point Road. The next one is from Dev Barker dated February 1st, 2021 of 138 Bridge Street. Next one is from February 1st, 2021 from Dana Landry of 11 Tux Point Road. Next one dated February 1st, 2021 to, from Mary Ant. You kill from 44 Harbor Street. Next one is dated. February 5th, 2021 from Donna Naugler and Peter Naugler from 29 Harbor Street. I apologize if I'm messing up any of these names. The next one is dated February 7th, 2021 from Melissa Landsick. Of 22 Boardman Ave. Next one is from Ray Ozzy and Duana Kay. Dated February 7th, 2021 from 50 Harbor Street. Next one is from Richard Lau, 25 Harbor Street dated February 8th, 2021. The next one is from Jonathan Payson, 11 Boardman Ave dated February 8th, 2021. Next one is dated February 10th, 2021. From Cynthia and Armin's Russus of 31 Harbor Street. Next one is from Mike Chapman. Dated February 10th, 2021 of 131 Bridge Street. Next one is from John and Leslie Gurley of 2 Tux Point Road dated February 10th, 2021. Next one dated February 13th, 2021 from Peter and Tori Morton of 128 Bridge Street. Next one dated February 14th, 2021 from Patrick and Julie Reordin of 21 Boardman Ave. Next one dated February 15th, 2021 from Robin and Joseph Falzone of 73 Harbor Street. The next one is from Amy Snodgrass of 69 Harbor Street dated February 15th, 2021. Next one dated February 15th. 2021 is from Sue Thompson of Zero Harbor Street. Next one is dated February 15th, 2021. From Miles Allen, Audrey Allen, Tate Allen, Grace Allen, Joseph Allen of 12 Jersey Lane. The next one is dated February 16th, 2021 from Bart Gear of 15 Boardman Ave. The next one is dated February 16th, 2021 from Philio Wigglesworth Pushing from 16 Harbor Street. And the last one is from seven, February 17th, 2021. From Bruce Journey and Cynthia Journey of 8 Tux Point. Road. You can tell my printer's been busy.
Madam Chairman, this is Ron Skates. I wrote a letter dated January 26th. And copied a number of town officers who've responded to me. It was addressed to you, but you didn't read the name. And I'm concerned, I'm, I'm concerned because if other town officials received it, I'm surprised you didn't.
I received these. Each of these letters via individual emails. I, I spent six hours today going back my entire email stream trying to locate them all. Um, I know I had one from you in the first meeting.
That's correct. And this is the second letter and it's been acknowledged by the town administrator that he received it.
But that doesn't mean it came to me.
Well, it certainly was addressed to you and was delivered to the town.
Okay, well, I, you know.
And in the first letters, some were missing from there also. And since there's a lot, could be an appeal on this. I think it's important that all those letters be maintained and found.
They will be, all, all of the letters are being maintained in our records. And we're doing the best we can. Unfortunately, Town Hall is closed. And so if things are mailed to Town Hall, I cannot walk to Town Hall to get them.
It was also emailed to you and to Town Hall, and I have a copy of that. So how do I get the letter to you? Because I feel it's unfair that my letter not be represented.
If you will send it again to the town clerk, it will be forwarded to me.
Well, I did that once. I'll do it again.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Sorry about that.
Mr. Skates?
Yes.
Any chance the second one was in support?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay, just checking. It's just in case.
Mr. Skates, what was the date of your second letter, sir?
January 26th.
Thank you. We'll make sure it gets in.
Thank you.
Okay, I now will open this up for public comment. Mating people to speaking no more than five minutes.
Madam Chair, it's, uh, Sue Thompson. We also submitted a second letter.
Right, I read that in.
No, no, my husband sent a separate letter.
What date?
Uh, the, the day after mine. I think the 16th.
We'll look for it.
It was a chart contrasting the end versus the proposal.
And what was your husband's name? I'm sorry.
Oh, Bob Thompson.
Bob Thompson, okay, we'll look for it.
Thank you.
It, it's been a challenge for us because the assistant town clerk. Who's been handling all of this stuff retired today, so things have been a little chaotic. I'm trying to do the best we can.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say? Your hands raised.
Uh, no, not at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Blau.
Oh, thank you. Um, sorry, I thought I was later in line. Uh, this Richard Blau, 25 Harbor Street. For those of you, and most of you don't know me, uh, I was. Chair of the Planning Board for a couple of years. Uh, I'm really rusty, but I still have some familiarity with the bylaws. Uh, now the chairman has stated that most of the process and. Uh, arguments that the special permit shouldn't be granted for this is already decided and I shouldn't bring it up tonight. So I will briefly say that. This is more of a request for a zoning change than what you'd normally see in a ZBA variance, okay? We have the bylaw, we have a planning board, we have selectmen, we have town meeting, we've got all sorts of rules for this district. Uh, we have careful process if we're dealing with subdivisions. Special permits usually require massive amounts of homework and documents. Um, and they really are discretionary. The ZBAs are based on equity and what we have here. In the first instance was a really flimsy plan. Okay, it's almost, except for the map, it's almost hand-drawn. We have a lot of verbal assertions from the applicant that it's good for the neighborhood. No studies, no traffic, no anything. Um, and. I was a little, I'm very uncomfortable with that and I will leave it at that. And since the rest of what I was going to say is now pretty moot. Uh, please permit me just to kind of randomly go through some of the stuff that I heard. Uh, in the last few minutes. Okay. First, this plan was emailed to Town Hall, um, according to Adele at 11:40 today. Now, we are considering a special permit here. No one. Sitting here has had adequate time to look at that. And that just is not fair. Okay, and now we're getting more representations. Um. And I'm a little concerned about some of them. So let me, I'm sorry, it's a little disorganized. Let me run through some. Um. The six parking spaces. The rule being referred to in the town really relates to another part of town and there is no rule. For District E. In fact. By its definition, this variance is supposed to consider. How much it's necessary, what's fair and what's good for the neighborhood. It's not in any way obligated to accept a six-space. Uh, calculation and that isn't applicable here. Especially since there's no parking on 127 or on Harbor Street. And incidentally, I forget who asked. But I know of at least one accident there and I'll bet there are more because it is dangerous. Um, I'm a little confused and just a question. Is it three three-bedroom apartments plus an apartment in the shed? Or is it, so how many, what's total? And you can answer me later, please. I don't know. Please don't break in on me, okay? You, you can wait like everybody else, sir.
Okay.
Okay, this place got a very, uh, it was grandfathered. It has failed as an inn. The seasonal license doesn't matter because there's never anybody there. And comparing it as a full. Building to and saying, well, anything we improve on, on that is better. Is not a good comparison. The good comparison is what, what's really going on there now? And how is this gonna change it? And that is a different argument. I would also argue that where we don't have information, the burden to provide that information is on the applicant. It is not on the neighbors. And there isn't, all we have here is these bare assertions that it's okay. Um, and if we're gonna go back and redo plans, we're on a 90-day. Um, limit here, aren't we? Unless he consents to withdraw and come back. Um, okay, I have an accent. I'm sorry. I'm trying to get this all done in five minutes. Um, okay, just to comment, high-end units, um, I think Mr. Brown said. On 14,000 square feet with nowhere to sit outside. Okay, if you say so. Um. There are a lot, you know, okay, I. I would respectfully submit, and first of all, um, I'm sorry because your name, excuse reading is Melanie and I can't remember. If you got a call, if you, if you got a call as you described, that is absolutely appalling. But. Most of the people here would never have made that call. I, you know, and it's appalling that you got it, but it doesn't affect the ZBA's decision here. All right. And Town Hall's being closed is, shouldn't affect their decision and are it making it more difficult to get better information than we have as. Uh, Mr. Mitchell, I think the ZBM member said, we don't have that. Um. And I would finally say that special permits are discretionary. There's a lot going on here. But when they got the variance for the inn, it's been pretty much, it's not all that attractive or all that historical. Um. And. The fairness here is that it, it, we gave somebody a variance way back. There's no guarantee that we're gonna allow maximum value in a property. I would. Suggest that the actual owner of the property and is not being deprived of any rights if you deprive, uh, deny this variance. And, um. I guess I will leave it at that. Uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Blau. Um, number one, I would state this inn did not receive a variance. It was. Used as an inn before the town in Manchester put in zoning.
Yes, it was grandfathered.
It's a grandfathered, non-conforming use and what's before the ZBA is a special permit. To, to change that use. It is not a variance before us. Okay, and there's completely different standards, whether it's a special permit or a variance. Thank you. Uh, Mike Chapman.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a, a couple of things. I, I think we've, we've covered things like the density and how that's similar, uh. To the, uh, temporary or occasional in to, uh, the, the full. Uh, full usage of the, uh, of the three units and how the, the number of bedrooms are roughly the same. But I wanted to talk, I wanted to ask a little bit more about the parking. I think, Madam Chair, you had, uh, noticed that the. Entrance and exit from the lot as currently planned, uh, would, uh, would come in and out on the crosswalk that, that crosses Harbor Street. But there's another crosswalk that is, it's not shown on the, on the plan. That comes across Bridge Street and ends at just about the, the, the sign of the Old Corner Inn. And with the fence now in place, uh, that would mean that there is nowhere for pedestrians to go. Uh, they would be, they'd really be stuck out in the street, uh, if they were to try to, uh, continue up Harbor Street. So I think there's, there's, there's more work to be done on the, on the parking and, and how that, how that may all, uh, lay out. On the, on the comment about the accidents, I said last time. That the last two accidents happened on our property. And yes, it's a, it's a dangerous corner. Yes, people don't watch what they're doing. But the additional traffic will certainly not help that situation at all. Uh, a little over a year ago, we had someone coming from Beverly who. Hit the, the curb on the, uh, on the triangle, crossed both lanes of traffic, flipped their car over the wall, the, uh, stone wall and ended up in our side yard. And we were very lucky that no one else was coming and it was late at night, so there was no pedestrians, but that certainly could have been. But that certainly could have been a fatal accident. The other one happened earlier this year where someone didn't want to wait for the turning traffic, turning up Harbor Street. They tried to pass them on the right, hit the curb, lost control, and mowed down most of the fence in front of our house. The thing that concerns me the most about that one was that I was walking up the driveway and was probably within about 10 feet of the accident when it happened. So, you know, these are, these are things with, with the extra traffic stopping, turning, and entering will, will not get any better. And if you really want to be shook up, be a, be an eyewitness to an accident like that and realize just how close you were to to being involved in that. And I think that that's, you know, that, that will change your view on, on the safety of the area. So I'd like to, like to stop at that point, Madam Chairman, and thank you very much for everyone for, for your thoughtful comments.
Thank you. NWJ, would you please state your name and address?
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. Noel Johnson from 40 Harbor Street. Hi, Nick, and all neighbors. I just had a couple of questions and some follow-ups from the last meeting. There was discussion about a traffic study that was going to take place. Did you, were you able to do that?
Is that for me?
That's for you or your counsel?
So, I'll answer it. So, I, I didn't do a traffic study. And I'll tell you why. Because when I went from six units down to three and mitigated the parking to what is below, what I believe is there now, I thought that that was going to satisfy the parking question, I thought that was going to park, the density question. I thought everything I did was very thoughtful, and I answered all the questions and the concerns from everybody. Less park, less cars, less units, less everything. So I'm, I'm all ears. I, I wanted, I really want to do this project, and I'd like to satisfy everybody, so I will continue listening. But I don't want, I do not want to reduce the scope any further in terms of the units. I am very happy to look at any opinions that someone may have in regards to how I can mitigate parking. I mean, if I simply put three spots up top and three spots in the back, even though someone stated that that's not a requirement or a rule, and there's no real rule. I mean, at what point is the number of cars on that top lot an acceptable number for everybody? I mean, I don't know what it is. I think four in that big area is not unreasonable. I believe that I can mitigate it, and I believe that I'm happy to go back and look at ways to make it even better and safer, if it's possible. But I don't want to continue to lower the scope in order of finally getting a yes. I'd rather, I'd rather stay with this particular plan. It's very good for me. I believe, regardless of all the people pushing back, that it is very good for the area. It is not less safe. I think it's actually safer, again, my opinion.
Okay, well, thank you. I, you know, yeah, I, I think you answered the question.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
No worries. And, Nick, I apologize. I'm sorry that you had this conversation with whoever it was that had the threatening posture, but I think it's important to-
It was awful, it was gross, it was disgusting.
It's, and it's not appropriate, and I'm, and I'm sorry that that happened, but as you can tell, this is obviously a contentious situation.
Sure.
You know, you have, you have attorneys in the neighborhood, you have people that have hired counsel before this thing even getting off the ground. So you get a sense of, of, you know, how how litigious this could get, right? And it doesn't just stop at the zoning board, right? It goes essentially to the state, and then, you know, it can be a mess, and that's something for you and Russ to talk about. And just to say that, that I've seen, you know, some awful accidents witnessed at that corner, and so that's a major concern. But anyway, I I think that's, that's it from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Miles Allen?
Hi, I'm Miles Allen from 12 Jersey Lane. Thank you very much for taking my comments. I just have a couple of questions for Nick. I'm curious, are these going to be condominiums or are they going to be rental units?
So my plan was to make three units, approximately 1,800 square feet apiece. I was planning on putting an elevator in the building, three bedrooms each, and I was going to keep them, and I was going to lease them out yearly. I was going to put provisions in place for autonomous ownership, but I wasn't planning on doing that now. So I was not filing this with condos in place, no.
Okay, so they're rental units?
Correct.
With possibility of conversion at later date?
Yeah.
So, okay, and I appreciate that. So I think so if you have rental units with three bedrooms, and you effectively have two parking spots per unit assigned to each unit.
Yep.
You have two, two parking spots for your personal use as well, for a total of eight.
Correct.
We're, and, and maybe this is just something that you foster upon your tenants, but there's no place for any other guests to park, and, and that concerns me because I live on the only street that I think, and hopefully I'm wrong, that allows parking. And that's Jersey Lane. And Jersey Lane's so, so narrow that if one was to park on Jersey Lane, you either have to do a three-point turn in a private driveway to get back to 127, or you have to go up through Forrester to get back, which is not going to happen. So I guess I'm just kind of curious as to what your thoughts are on, on, on just having two spots per person, per unit. And I know that kind of seems to be the, the driving theme of today's discussion, but to me, if I'm got a three-bedroom apartment, I need at least two, two spots because that's the way most adults live in today's world. Some people would prefer it not to be that way, but that's the reality we live in right now. And so, I mean, how does anybody even have a guest home?
This is Sarah Melish. I, I think part of the challenge we have is that the Manchester zoning bylaws only require two parking spots for a single-family home. So you're now suggesting that he should, there should be-
I don't know, it's not a single-family home, though, right?
No, but it's only six required for four units. So I, I think that, to some extent, trying to impose parking conditions that don't exist in our bylaws.
Okay, I appreciate that comment. Thank you, thank you for that. So my final comment, and again, this is for Nick, and, and I apologize for the public, for the call that you got from somebody that I don't know who it is, and it's uncalled for, so I think everybody agrees with that. But I think one of the issues that I see here that I guess is relatively disturbing to me, and it's also hopefully disturbing to the board, in that Nick says, quote, "It's a very good project for the area," unquote. But we've got, I don't know, what's the number, 28 letters or more opposing the project, all from the neighbors? So to me, it's, it's interesting that everybody thinks it's great for the area, except for the people that live in the area. So I really hope the board takes that into consideration versus what they think might be good for, for the neighbors that are here. That's my comments for tonight. I appreciate everybody's participation.
Thank you. Adam Costa?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Adam Costa. As I had stated at your January meeting, I'm representing Sue and Bob Thompson. The Thompsons live at Zero Harbor Street, which of course is just across the street from the, from the inn and the property that is at issue. So I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I appreciate the, the service that all of you provide as board members. And I appreciate that this is a difficult application that's before you with, with intense opposition, and I know the challenges that that presents to to a board like yours. Madam Chair, I want to touch briefly, and I won't belabor the point because I referenced it in a previous letter that I submitted to the board, but you, you began the meeting tonight by referencing, you, you didn't cite it specifically, but essentially the language in Section 6.1.2 of the bylaw. That's the language that allows for changes, extensions, or alterations to non-conforming uses and structures. And if I understood you correctly, I think what you had indicated is that that language is that authorizes the sort of change that is now being proposed. The change from a pre-existing, non-conforming seasonal or, or year-round inn to a proposed multifamily development. I appreciate that position. It was a surprise to me only because at the conclusion of the last session of the public hearing, I didn't think that that was an established point. I, in fact, spoke in opposition to that, and I didn't get the sense that there was consensus amongst board members. The question was put to the applicant, and if I remember correctly, the applicant's counsel indicated that he disagreed with me and believed that there was case law to that, to that point, and would cite to it. I've not seen any additional submittal by the applicant. So I would just urge the board again, if I could, to take a second look at Section 6.1.2. What really drove the, the point home for me is, I know, because I've crafted them for towns I represent, and because I've reviewed them in, in towns where I've done private work, I know that there is a way to craft zoning bylaw that allows for changes from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming or disallowed use. I know there's, there's a way to do that. And what drove the point home for me over the course of the past few weeks is, I, I spent some time on your, on your town website reviewing master plans and reviewing various planning and land use documents, and I, I see that you're, you're undergoing a recodification of your zoning bylaw. Been underway for some time now. I think you're on draft eight or nine, and I think, I believe it's the final draft. And in fact, my, my former partner, Mark Robousky, is your consultant, who's performing that, assisting you with that, that task. And I looked at the new non-conformity provisions, and in fact, the new non-conformity provisions do what in my opinion your current bylaw doesn't do. They allow you to change, and I'm going to quote it, "Change from one non-conforming use to another less detrimental, non-conforming use." That's the language of the new proposed bylaw, obviously not yet adopted by, by town meeting, but that's the sort of language I'm used to seeing that authorizes a change from one non-conforming use to another use altogether. As opposed, as opposed to other sorts of changes, tweaks, extensions, alterations that might be allowed to non-conforming structures or uses that aren't wholesale changes to entirely different uses. And again, it was telling to me that your new bylaw says that, or your potential new bylaw says that, but your existing bylaw doesn't. It was also telling that your new bylaw actually imposes a more stringent standard. You need to establish that the change is to a, another less detrimental use. And what you're suggesting now is that if your, if your existing bylaw allows that to occur, all you would have to find is that the new use is not substantially more detrimental. And that's a far easier test, and I, I think it's, it's sort of dangerous ground. You've already heard one of the residents comment on this being the, the, the task of town meeting and not the task of, of, of zoning board of appeals or a planning board or, or a local body. And I would sort of echo that. And again, I, I say that with no disrespect to your board. I believe you're very good at what you do, but in terms of deciding whether a multifamily use is appropriate or permissible in a residency district, or for that matter, any residential district, I really think that that's a task that should be left to town meeting and not allowed through a special permit of this sort, unless the bylaw explicitly allows it. And I don't, I don't believe that it does. The second point I want to make, and it's the only other point that I have, really goes to the merits of the proposal that's before you. I've, I've heard it said, I think it was said by the applicant or the applicant's representative, that this is a significant, or maybe substantial is the word that was used, a substantial change or reduction from what was proposed to you just a few weeks ago. And I agree that at first glance, in fact, when I first looked at it, I, I even said to my client, well, it's a, it's a 50% reduction. They were proposing six two-bedroom units, and now that's become three units in the, in the, in the inn building. Well, number one, that's ignoring altogether the carriage house, so it's really seven to four. And number two, the proposal is from six two-bedroom units to three three-bedroom units. So even if we look at just the inn itself, and we don't consider the carriage house, it's really a reduction from the previous proposal of, from, from 12 bedrooms to nine bedrooms. So it's a three-bedroom or a 25% reduction. Now, that is a reduction, so it's an improvement. But it's still a lot of bedrooms for a site like this. And it's also a lot of three-bedroom units for a site like this. And the challenge with three-bedroom units, and again, I'm sure this is not new to your board, is that three-bedroom units, four-bedroom units tend to cater to individuals with families, to households. And, and families with children. And believe me, I'm not speaking out against families or children. I've got three children of my own. But on a site like this, a site that is already as intense as it is, a site that is already overdeveloped by the, the pure standards in your, in your zoning bylaw, the tension, density and dimensional requirements, to then place three-bedroom units on the site, you've got to presume you're going to have a couple, maybe one or two children in these units. Even if you meet parking standards, it's going to be a cramped site. There's not a lot of opportunity for overflow. Either by way of street parking or parking elsewhere on the site. It's a very dense site in terms of development. There's no outdoor or recreational areas on the site because of the fact that the site is developed the way that it is. I realize that we're starting with what we've got. There's not a whole lot that can be done about the size of the building, about the size of the parcel. It is what it is. But I think that should inform the board's decision-making in terms of what's appropriate here. And I, I would be remiss if I didn't say I still think that three three-bedroom units plus a fourth unit with at least two bedrooms in the carriage house is too intense a use for this site of this size in this location. It needs to be further reduced. Thank you.
Lisa Wilson?
Hi, thank you, Chairperson. I appreciate it. Sarah, can I just ask you to clarify the current zoning use? You, I did hear you say correctly, it was year-round.
What I'm, the, the license issued by the Board of Selectmen to the, to Harbor Street, there are two licenses issued on an annual basis. One is for an inn holder's license, and the other is for a common victor's license. Neither of those licenses carry any type of restriction. So they go based on state law, which would say to me, they're not restricted to seasonal use, and they're not restricted to whom they can serve food to.
Okay, so that's actually, thank you. Not to interrupt you. So essentially, it could with any owner, become a year-round inn and potentially a restaurant on the premises, because they can serve food.
That's what appears to me.
Right. So essentially, if that were to take place, and someone were to do the conversion to that, they wouldn't even need a special permit. They could simply purchase it, pump all the money they want into it, and turn it into something that would actually magnify the current traffic problem. And I just want to recap, and I, I will try to be as succinct as possible. So I took a lot of notes. I was on the last meeting. I've lived here for over 30 years. I've been a neighbor of the inn, and I promise you, I walk up and down the street constantly. I've witnessed accidents. Someone nearly drove into my house on the street. There have been, it's, it's a grave concern. And so I do believe that the applicant has taken the notes that we gave him into account, and one of my biggest concerns has been ingress and egress from that parking area. Just last weekend, even roped off, there was a near accident while I was out on that crosswalk. Mike Chapman is not incorrect in saying that all the neighbors, I don't think there's any question that there is a safety issue. What I'd like the board to remember, and my neighbors to remember, is that the safety issue is already in existence. And the potential for it to continue or worsen is very real. I think here, with this applicant's proposal, we have an opportunity to collaborate on how to rectify and mitigate a real problem. And in fact, I reached out to neighbors who were on a group email and stated that I would really like to go forward regardless of the project and propose some changes. It's a state highway. And I think there are two separate issues. There's a real concern about safety on that corner, period, regardless of what is currently in existence right now and what might be if the conversion goes through. I think they're two separate issues, and I asked if anyone wanted to join me. In 20-plus people, I got one reply. Now, I, I can appreciate that. Everyone's busy. We have a lot going on. Now, given that we have an applicant who's willing to take notes and to collaborate, put up privacy fencing, and my hope is that the board and Nick, somehow it could be written in that there are more, I do think there needs to be some- somehow it could be written in that there are more, I do think there needs to be some more specific parking plan in place for people to be comfortable with it. I just wanted to go through, so that's the safety piece, the parking. So two spaces per unit. You know, there's so many places in town where a guest is going to park. Most of the houses on School Street don't even have parking. There are so many spots in town where there's no extra parking. In this instance, if there are permanent residents living there and they have guests, they could park a car at Tux Point and shuttle their guests, walk to the house. I think that that concern is not quite so valid. Yes, it's a dangerous corner. There are lots of dangerous corners and lots of dangerous places in this town where people park in the road. And I think it would just be something that's written into the lease. I think at least in that case, that if Nick was willing to add some things to the lease where guests need to park a tux point or whatever, I don't even know if that's possible, but I think that there is some options here for some collaboration. And also the accidents, I want to point out, so many people have talked about the accidents. The accidents that I've been privy to in the last thirty years have not been a result to my knowledge of anyone entering or exiting that property. It's it's speed, alcohol, wintry conditions, and just careless driving. So I don't believe that change, in fact, I actually think by putting a fence or some type of retaining law and clearly indicating an in-out, whatever it might be, is actually going to mitigate the current situation, which is really dangerous. So the other issue was recreational space. I do agree that you know, currently, when there are people at the inn, they hang out on the porch. Now, perhaps Nick could come up with some space where there's a common grill area or whatever, but I don't know that whether or not he has that written into the plan has any impact on the viability of this plan. I actually am concerned that that the focus is lost. And I don't want to go on about it, but I'm actually in support of seeing something in place of what's currently there that would allow, you know, more permanent residents in that area as opposed to transient population. And in fact, the potential for an increase in transient population is very real. And I would just like to remind neighbors that that's a real concern because currently as it's zoned, it could be so much worse. And I do think that taking the time to have the town, it's not for this meeting, Sarah, and I appreciate you listening. But I just want to remind people that there are two separate issues, the safety on that corner and the parking situation. So thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Durkin?
Hi, thank you. I just in my Tom Durkin at Twenty Harbor Street. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points. One, the the issue, I'm hopeful that the board is going to take into consideration all the comments that are being raised this evening, all the letters that are being submitted. We listened to the concerns of Tua Butters for one forty-four Summer Street. And frankly, I felt that they got a lot more attention than all of us who attended the last meeting were afforded. So hopefully in this meeting, we're afforded the same type of attention and given the same type of credence that were given to the Tua Butters and one forty-four Summer Street. Secondly, I'm also concerned about some of the Cavalier comments about driving and safety on the corner that were raised by Mr. John B. and Mr. Solacy earlier. Having lived there for twenty-seven years and having had a son who's almost hitting that crosswalk. My wife was instrumental in getting the blinking light put on one twenty-seven, having had to work with the town and the State Highway Commission. This Solacy almost had two kids who he rafted in sixth grade travel, almost didn't make seventh grade travel. It's a serious, serious area. And I think that if we are to carefully consider this, there should be a real parking study, not simply something that's spitballed on the back of the envelope because, you know, Nick, God bless you, you're giving it your best, but I'm not a parking expert. Doesn't sound like you are. But I think that somebody with some expertise should give this a more careful look. But we hope you take this under careful consideration. The people who are on this call, vast majority have lived here for at least twenty years and some up to sixty years. So you have a lot of people who are concerned and please take it under careful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, are you, are you, are you saying as a whole? Or are you saying with more consideration regarding the parking? Or are you, let's play this spot. Do you not like the whole concept? Or are you thinking that the parking specifically is something that you don't really feel has been addressed properly?
I don't think the parking has been addressed properly, Nick, and I'm also concerned about the density. I feel that while I appreciate you trying to drop this from to a smaller number of units, you've only dropped it by two bedrooms. And I think you still have a possibility of having a larger number of people who are occupying the premises than, you know, is really appropriate on a full-time basis. Look, I think it would be great to have that to be a nice looking place, to put money in it. God bless you for trying to figure out a way to do it, but I just think it's the use is too dense. And I just don't think there's enough room for what you're proposing. Just, you know, Nick, you're a good guy, you know, I've known you, but I just, it's too dense. And I think it leaves a lot of people at risk.
Thank you, Tom.
Donna, you have your hand raised. Do you have something to say?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, everyone, and you know, listening to everyone's comments here.
Could you state your full name, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you state your full name, please?
Oh, my name is Donna Nagler and my husband and I live at twenty-nine Harbor Street.
Thanks.
Thank you. I agree with the danger of the corner and the, you know, the traffic and so forth, but I'm also focused on the neighborhood and the zoning for this neighborhood, which is Zone E. In checking with the town, the current requirement for a single-family home is ninety thousand square feet. The inn sits on thirteen thousand five hundred square feet. And we're proposing going from a nonconforming use to a different nonconforming use. And I understand that can be done with the granting of a special permit. But to afford the special permit, to allow it, the town has to make sure that the proposed project is in agreement with everything that's listed here in seven point five point two. And I read that and, you know, it has to be harmonious with the neighborhood. It cannot be detrimental to the neighborhood or injurious to the neighborhood. Well, I simply look at this and go, I'm living in Zone E where if I was to purchase a piece of land here and start fresh, I need to have ninety thousand square feet to put one single-family home on that property. So I'm having a hard time justifying the fact that we're even discussing putting a six-unit plus now it's a three-unit, three-bedroom, three-unit with another unit for two bedrooms on a thirteen thousand square foot lot. To me, that is not harmonious with the neighborhood. It's also in a dangerous area. It's detrimental to the neighborhood. And I think the town needs to pay the town, the planning board, the zoning board. I would expect that they're looking at all the items that are listed here in section seven point five point two. And that they're making sure that the proposed project that may get a special permit granted by the board is in compliance with all these requirements. And I did not, I have not heard that. I do not see it. And I think it's, you know, I don't want to be black and white, but I think it's very simple. And I don't think that, I was kind of concerned, very concerned when I listened to the last meeting. And at the end of the meeting, I heard from three or four different members of the board that simply said, well, I think Manchester needs more rental units. Well, Manchester may need more rental units, but I do not think that it's harmonious or appropriate or not detrimental to put those rental units in a Zone E neighborhood. We all invested in this neighborhood because it's a single-family, beautiful home, beautiful neighborhood, and we are paying for this neighborhood. And if someone feels they think we need more rental units, that's fine. Let's find a zone where it would be appropriate.
Ma'am, are you implying that rental units are not beautiful homes?
No, not at all. Who said that? Not at all. But this is Zone E and you're going from a nonconforming use. Fine, it was grandfather wonderful. And we're going to completely scratch that and we're going to go to a totally different nonconforming use. Well, to me, you're starting with a new slate. And the new slate and the new zoning laws are that this zone requires ninety thousand square feet for a single-family home. Not a three-unit rental property with another unit in the back. And I expect that the planning board and the zoning board have a responsibility to represent the residences in those zones, or why do we have zones to begin with? It's not of what I feel or I think, it's what's required, what is acceptable by the rules and regulations that are put into place by the town and the people.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, the challenge we have is that two-thirds of the properties in Manchester are nonconforming. And property owners who owned the land before the zoning went in can't be penalized because the town put overlay Zone E. And so it's always, it's, it's
I understand that. I understand that.
It's just difficult.
Yeah, but I mean, and then we say, well, someone could come in and make this another inn. So be it. They'll make it a beautiful inn. You know, that's not a reason to say, oh, well, let me scare you so that we allow this rental property to go into a spot where it shouldn't be.
Okay, thank you. Tori Martin?
Is an inn kind of a rental property?
Well, we're going to get into the definition of an inn versus a rental property?
No, Nick, we're not going there. Tori Martin?
Hi, sorry about that. Tori Morton and Peter Morton were at one twenty-eight Bridge Street, which is right next to the old Corner Inn, Two Harbor Street. And I just wanted to thank everyone. I think this has been, you know, really interesting for us. When Nick first called us, we were excited. We wanted the inn to be renovated. We thought, wow, rental units, that sounds interesting, you know, we were open to this. But I, it's been an incredible experience to hear from everyone in our entire neighborhood. It's been an amazing, you know, effort by everyone. Everyone is thoughtful. They have great points there. You know, I didn't, we didn't think about half the points that came up. And now that I've heard these points from everyone, I just, I don't, I don't understand why there haven't been specifics to address these points that we've heard. They're all so valid. I mean, Amy Snodgrass, I don't know if anyone else saw her letter or if your board did, but I haven't heard one answer. She wrote the most amazing letter about, you know, laws and requirements for trash disposal and rental unit, you know, buildings and people have done incredible research and because they have valid concerns. So I'm just wondering, like, you know, like Noel said, it, you know, it's the job of Nick and his team to to answer these concerns. And look how many people here have concerns. So I just haven't heard anything about like, where is the storage? Where is the trash? Where is the snow removal? There have been no specifics at all. And that's, I think that's all we're asking for is just trying to be reasonable here. I mean, we appreciate all that you guys do and your time and but it's just, we need to see specifics because these are all incredibly valid concerns.
And we'd also like to say, Nick, the way you led off this discussion, I'm really sorry that that someone did put you through that because that the group that we've been talking to here has come at this in a purely professional and thoughtful way. And we're really sorry that you had to experience that because that is no one's intent.
But I just, I I'm just wondering, I just gave the last thing to the board. I just wondered, does anyone have a response to say that letter that Amy submitted that I just read yesterday, I think, about the trash?
So this is Sarah Melish. We're trying to go through the points piece by piece. We received, the original plan was for six units. We received a new plan for four units and our ask tonight was that one of the huge issues was traffic safety and the backing of the parking onto the street. And so our ask was, can that be reexamined? We need to go through this piece by piece. If you eliminate two of the parking spaces by the red carriage house, you're freeing up that space where the dumpster is for the refuge collection, which opens it up for pickup. So we're, we're just, we're being overwhelmed. So many, when I have to spend six hours today just trying to find all the letters that are coming through, they're coming through one by one in my private email. And so, you know, we're trying to go through this slowly. And we, you know, we expect those issues to be addressed, but we don't know what the overall configuration of the proposal is yet.
Okay. Yeah, now, thank you for that. And with all due respect, we appreciate your comments, Madam Chairperson, but hearing from two other members of the board that they've already made up their minds without considering those that information is just a little disconcerting.
Yeah, I mean, we'll be going through every single piece that's in the bylaw.
Thank you very much.
Bob Thompson?
Hi, Bob Thompson, Zero Harbor Street. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for all the work you're doing. And I know we're slumping you with a lot of letters as a group, but we really, 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 really want to let you know that we're opposed to this. It's too small of a lot. There's nothing you can do about the size of a lot. You can only do something about the number of people on that lot and the size of the structures on that lot. That lot should be a single-family house, period. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be moved to a multifamily at all. That would be the best use. When it comes to a number of cars, I know there's some rules the town has for a number of cars that apply in certain zones, not in others, that there were really because there's parking on the street in some areas of our town, that those rules make some sense. What doesn't make sense is we're not considering the number of cars that would be practical for for an apartment that has three bedrooms or you have, you know, eleven bedrooms there is potentially you could have eleven or more cars that on for people that have the drivers there. You don't have enough space. There's just, period. There's not enough space on that property. If you could stretch the land, make it bigger, you could, you can get this project done. It just doesn't work that way. This really should be reduced to a single family, in my opinion, and I think in the opinion of a lot of the neighbors I've talked to. I hope you listen to these neighbors because they're representing great, great. They give me a lot of great information relative to this neighborhood, relative to the town. And then lastly, I'd like to say, there's deaths on this corner. I had, a couple of years ago, we had somebody run into my wall that died. A person that was walking by that wall only seconds before the car hit missed dying by just, you know, feet. You just really can't understand unless you live here. You can't understand how bad this is. And when you add more cars, more people to a very small piece of property, it's overly, it's way too dense. There shouldn't even be a single-family house on that property. It's so small. If that, somebody was trying to build a house on that property today, they would be denied based on our bylaws. And yet you're trying to make it into a four-family property? This shouldn't work. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any more. I don't see any more hands raised.
There is mine.
I've already heard from you. We're only allowing people to speak once for five minutes.
Ron Skates.
Ron Skates, yes.
I'm at Four Boardman Avenue, and thank you for letting me speak. I am interested in this whole project because of safety, having almost been picked off once or twice mailing letters at the triangle. So I spoke to the town administrator after I wrote the letter, which I'll make sure you get a copy of. And apparently, the town proposed to the state to straighten that, straighten the street out. And that they, the state would not fund it, and the town couldn't afford it itself, according to the town administrator. And he said, the reason they wanted to put a straight street there, in other words, get rid of the island, was because it's so dangerous. It's one of the most dangerous crossings in town, according to him. I don't want to misspeak or misquote him, but that's what he said. That leads to the point that someone said, well, these units, if children were there, the only place they're gonna have to play is in that triangle. And that's very concerning to me. Now, you say, well, we can control the kids. I'm, I'm not sure it works that way. But I'm very concerned about the safety, and I'm also concerned about the notion that this is basically providing for spot zoning. And I think it really should go to the planning board and let them decide if we want to have units like this in town, that's fine. Final question for Nick, who's been very helpful and cooperative when we've spoke. Hi, Nick.
Hi, Ron.
You mentioned, we only got the plan late this afternoon, but you mentioned you were gonna put elevators in it, but I can't find an elevator here.
No, so, so the plan did not come this afternoon. The plan was submitted on February fifth.
We only received them today.
I, I understand, but I submitted them.
Well, I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying the town.
The plans, the plans that you see in place, I, I put in place, Ron, because I wanted to show the reduction in scope. I'm not certain that that's the exact floor plan that I would use. But I am planning, what I would like to do is put the three nicest units on three floors, and I wanted to put an elevator in. And the reason I was thinking about an elevator, it's not in the plan, was because, and I'm not sure that I'm going to do it, but if it's feasible, I want to put an elevator in place to bring folks from the first floor up to the third floor to eliminate stairs, to have, to maybe cater to a older generation, doesn't want to walk up three flights of stairs to the third-floor unit.
Well, I, I think that makes good sense, but my problem is, I think if the board's gonna vote on something and there's gonna be an elevator, shouldn't it be in the plans the board votes on?
So I, again, I, I, I don't think so, because I was trying to just, again, I'm always right, probably not very right usually. But I was just trying to show the reduction in units from six to three in the inn. And I spoke to a couple of folks about having an elevator in the building. And I'd like to, I think it makes sense for that particular site to have one in there, if, if you can fit it in. But it's not in the plan, but when I go for the final building permit, I would then have to present that to the building inspector to let me know if it meets the, the, the code for the, for the building. Everything would have to be done to code and brought up to speed.
Just to be clear, if we were to issue a special permit, it would attach the plan you submitted to us to the special permit? And that would, the, the building department would be bound by those plans, so we would need final plans. You can't change them after.
Oh, boy. I, I'm unaware, Sarah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, but that is the rule.
These are not, these are not the final floor plan. They're not.
Nick, thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thanks, Ron.
Cynthia Rusus?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Pretty bad.
It's not very clear.
No.
I wanted to thank you, everyone, for your thoughtful and considerate comments tonight. Nick, I was very surprised in your initial comment about the call that you received. I just want to apologize for, on behalf of our neighborhood. No, I know. I just want you to know, there's nothing personal in this process.
I don't feel
And I haven't heard that from any single person that I've spoken to, so I just want you to be clear that we are not looking at this in that way. It's clearly concerned about traffic and safety. So my question to you, because the comments have been brought up many times about the lack of guest parking, which could easily be an issue with the number of bedrooms in the unit that you propose, the larger and the smaller one. But you haven't really spoken to that yourself, how you view the situation for guest parking on the property and what your perception is and how that could possibly be handled.
So there's a, I put, I reduced the amount of parking, I heard that from folks, there was too much parking. It's not answering your questions, Cynthia, I'll get to it. I put four spots up top, which I believe is less than you could probably hold in that particular top lot. There are four parking spaces in the back, and that's spots that were already there. I've heard that maybe we should reduce that to, to two in the back, to take, get the consideration, the, the refuse removal. I own other properties in town, and there, and there's limited parking even for the properties that I have. So if my tenants in the other homes that I own have a big party and they want to have people come over and there's no parking on the property, they can't park on the property. The same thing will happen here. There'll be provisions in place that will not allow tenants to have more than one car or they will not be able to have guests parking in the parking lot and in the driveway. I'm sure it'll happen. It happens everywhere. But I'm gonna try to do everything I possibly can under the scope and under the land that's there to make sure. I mean, that's what leases are for, and I have people coming in. They have to follow leases. It happens, it happens across the other properties I own.
I would imagine possibly the other properties don't have such restricted parking on the street and such dangerous parking on the street. And in addition, service vehicles that would regularly need to be at a four-family property, where would those service vehicles be able to go when you've got lots, top and bottom, that are potentially full?
Cynthia, I'm really sorry. That came across like you were underwater. I couldn't hear a word you said. I really apologize.
Yeah, Sarah, I, I can't hear her and I don't have a name or address.
Oh, okay, Cynthia Rusus, thirty-one Harbor Street, and perhaps I'll stop at that then, if it's difficult to hear names.
Question, in terms of, in terms of where the guests will park, I don't have an answer for you. I'm providing two spots per unit on the property as it stands. A reduction of what could potentially be parked there if it was, continues an inn. That's not an answer that everyone likes, but the reality is, the parking there is not great. If I put in these units, the parking may still not be great, but this is the provision I'm putting in. I don't have a perfect answer for everything. I do, I just simply don't. I'm doing my best with what I have. I'm listening to everybody. I'm hearing the opposition. I'm hearing the opinions. And I just would like to do it, it makes the most sense for me to do it this way. I'm happy to look at parking in and out for the top lot. I'm, I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to look at the fence and placement of the fence and the replacement of the fence so there could be an exit and an entrance. But in regards to where will all the people come to be guests for the residents, I don't know. There will be two spots provided per unit and they can park there. That's the best answer I have, Cynthia. I'm sorry.
Madam Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, you didn't raise your hand. Would you please say?
Yes, Filio Cushing, sixteen Harbor. Good evening, everyone. Hi, Nick, hi, neighbors. Everyone's made terrific points. I wanted to sort of talk a little bit about something that hasn't been addressed this evening. As, because my land runs right down to the, to the little red house. And Sarah, you brought up a great point earlier when you talked about how people get out of that driveway. What's happening now is there's one gold SUV there, and it's been parking on my land. There's, there's, with one SUV, there's really no room for, there's maybe room for two cars, but that's about it. So I wish, in addition to everything else, that people, that the board could respectfully review the current parking that's already been approved. Because it's not realistic for that small space, and people are constantly driving over my land. And, and it's, it's upsetting. So that would be something I would really appreciate being reviewed and looked at. I'm not gonna belabor all the other points. Everyone's made some terrific points, and I've outlined my major issues in my letter. And will the board be reading all of the letters that were submitted?
We will not be reading them into a meeting record. We have all the letters.
Okay, great. Yeah, that, that would be really important because there was terrific thought and time that everybody's put into that. So I would, in addition to everything else that's been said, which I concur with with my neighbors, I really think that the rear parking lot, and Nick, you've got four children, who, it's a two-bedroom house. So I'm not sure how that works. I don't know, maybe that's
Well, I had a wife, and then we had four kids.
No, that's great. Congratulations. Living in there, you're gonna have four kids living with yourself in the, in the rear, in the little red house?
Well, if you must know, Filio, I'm divorced.
No, 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 I understand that, but I'm
How many, how many, how many other personal questions will you have? Or will you just call me?
I, I'm just, okay, sorry, if that's, I just was, we're talking about people and population and cars. So anyway, I just hope that the rear parking with four spots already might be looked at.
There are, there are four spots in the back already as the plan stands. Regardless, regardless if it's an inn or if I convert it into three units, there are already four spots in the back. They're already there.
I do, thank you.
Happy to put as much screening as you need on your property and make sure nobody even comes close to it.
I, I understand that, but if you look at it now, the car that's there, there's just no other, there's not much room. So I don't know when that plan was made, but anyway, okay, enough said. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard?
Yeah, I raised my hand. So first of all, I want to apologize for speaking out of turn at the beginning.
Excuse me, just state your name for the
Yes, Armin's Rusus, thirty-one Harbor, Cynthia Rusband. And so sorry for speaking out of turn earlier, but you can tell this is a very emotive topic for everyone involved, including, including Nick. And I think everyone is striving to get to a resolution. The issue, I think, as Ron rightly points out, is this is a flawed intersection. And we're new to town, like, we've only been here for a few years, and we've just happened to have three permit drivers since the time we've been in town. And for anyone who's in that, we have a sixteen-year-old who just got her permit. This is an incredibly sketchy intersection. It's unclear. It's not well-signed. That's not Nick's fault, but unfortunately, he's asking for approval on a site that is flawed. So if we wanted to all get together, what should happen is, the town should reconfigure this intersection and possibly allow for additional space for Nick to do what he needs to do and for all the neighbors to be satisfied. But you can't avoid the fact that this is a dangerous flawed intersection. And I do take issue with, with the, the comments at the inception that, that this somehow is not documented or in fact. You have every neighbor here telling you this, this is a dangerous neighborhood with the intersection. And so that's the issue that you have to deal with. And unfortunately, Nick, you're, you're, you're caught up in the fact that this is a flawed area. And I'm not sure that there is a resolution to that. And maybe the zoning board in the town can possibly do what Ron has suggested, which is reconfigure the intersection. And then I'm sure that the neighbors would be very happy to engage in a more constructive conversation about how to make a safe project for everyone involved. Thank you.
Sarah, can I just go on record here, because I feel like I'm being a little picked on? One of those individuals who was in a serious accident was one of my relatives, my family members, so I just want to be on record for that. I understand the intersection. I understand that it's a dangerous intersection, so I just want to go on record and say that. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
Dev Barker, one thirty-eight Bridge Street.
Hi, Mr. Barker.
I wanted to, I spent my career in the insurance business, and I wanted to ask so I'm very concerned about fire safety. And I look at the Old Corner Inn, and frankly, I worry. So I wanted to ask, Nick, is the building presently sprinkled?
The building is presently not sprinkled. It does have its own fire system that is hardwired throughout the entire building, but there is no
Sprinklers, though?
No, there are no sprinklers in place.
And under the Manchester Code, converting to apartments, would you have to sprinkler?
For three units, you would not. I checked with the fire department. If I had the six units approved, I would have had to sprinkler the, I would have had to sprinkler it.
So you don't intend to sprinkler it?
I do not, if I don't have to.
Well, that makes me even more opposed. That building is frankly a fire waiting to happen. And especially with two more kitchens than, than exist in the present structure.
Just so you know, there are actually three kitchens in it currently. There's the main kitchen, there's the kitchen in the basement, and there's a kitchen on the, I believe, third floor as well, with a stove. So we, we wouldn't be adding any more kitchens?
That, that structure is, is a, I know what burns. I, I insured the, the boatyard that burned down in this town twenty, twenty-five years ago, and I know what goes. And the Old Corner Inn is, is, is a hazard for the neighbors.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard who hasn't spoken already? Then I will go back to the applicant, applicants' council and question whether it makes sense to do a continuance. Catherine, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say, you know, just to get this on the record before, before we do the continuance, that, you know, I, I find it a little bit frankly concerning to me that Lisa Wilson said she emailed all of the neighbors to see if they wanted to do something about the safety on the corner, regardless of this project, and only one person responded. That makes me concerned that all of this talk about safety is a pretext for opposition to not having a single-family residence there. So I just wanted to note that discrepancy and say that I find it concerning.
Thank you, Catherine.
Sorry, could I just say something to that effect in, in response?
Tori Morton.
This is Tori Morton, one twenty-eight Bridge Street. I did respond to Lisa Wilson, and I know someone else did because I saw the email to her. But my response was saying that I did not want to be part of the traffic study because Sue Durkin and I had gone through a lot, and Sue, Sue spearheaded the whole thing years ago. And it was crazy hard to even speak to the state about anything. And I said to Lisa, that's a great idea, but I really don't want to be involved. I think that is Nick's response. And I said to Lisa, that's a great idea, but I really don't want to be involved. I think that is Nick's responsibility to, to handle that for all of our concerns.
Okay.
I want to, I want to reiterate that. We spent, my wife and Tori spent an enormous amount of time working with the state and the town just to get that stoplight in. And we, we've been through this once before. It was months, if not into over a year to get it done. This is not our responsibility. This is the responsibility of either Nick or of the planning board. But to put this back as it's the neighbor's responsibility to fix this is, is, in my view, completely out of line.
I never got an email.
Yeah, and just, and just, just for, for disclosure, um, the email from Lisa is a very constructive email asking to, to address the pedestrian traffic safety. It mentions nothing about, uh, having a view of what should be there, shouldn't be there, and it's perfectly reasonable. You know, my wife responded saying she would be part of this. It's perfectly reasonable to understand that people didn't want to choose to create another group beyond what was already formed to have a conversation, so, um, you know, happy to forward that along.
Thank you.
I, I have to comment also because I did respond to Lisa when that message first came out, and I spoke with other neighbors and heard the same thing that the Durkens just mentioned, which was that a huge effort had been undertaken just recently on that traffic safety issue. And I personally, and on behalf of the rest of the group, are, I'm offended to think that a board member thinks we have ulterior motives in our comments. Particularly when you see the earnest viewpoints and the basis for the genuine concern. So everyone here is, is, is direct and forthcoming in their comments, and there's no ulterior motives behind them.
Thank you.
I don't know who that was.
Madam Chair, this is Sue Thompson, the very next day.
I'm, I, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm limiting people to talking ones, and we're not going to get into, he said, she said regarding who responded to an email that was outside of the control of the ZBA. That's not appropriate for this meeting.
Chair, that's not my comment, and I haven't spoken yet today, other than saying that we didn't, you didn't receive one of our letters, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I have a very quick comment. As the, the very next day after the January 20th meeting, I immediately called the Mass Highway Department to get as much information about what they've done as far as studying the traffic there, understanding what they've done to, and what plans they have to alleviate any problems. So I just want to be on the record, say we take this very seriously, and different people have acted differently in order to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Yes, Nick.
So, uh, I, uh, I'm gonna tell you what I'd like, and then you tell me how to do it properly, okay? All right, but so this is what I'd like to do. Not having submitted the actual proper floor plans, but just submitting a floor plan for three units. I'd like to go, I'd like to come back and give you the exact floor plans that I want with the elevator where I'm planning on putting it. With the parking being addressed uh, on the upper lot, I'm not going to reduce the number of spots, but I am going to find a way or attempt to find a way to put the spots in a entrance and exit method that allows for greater safety. I will see if I can't place a fence in a better position. Uh, in addition, I'm going to find screening for Ms. Cushing's, uh, property to make sure that nobody is, uh, transgressing on her property. I'm going to add more screening for the back of the, uh, for, for the Morton's property. And I'd like to maybe get some input from the Morton's as to what kind of screening they would like, if they would like to send me a quick note. Um, aside from that, when I come back, if I may come back next month with, uh, a real finite plan, and for the last time, I'm going to come back with the same number of units. I know nobody wants to hear that, but I am. Uh, it's going to be the same number of bedrooms per unit. Um, I'm going to keep the same number of parking spaces. I am going to, uh, attempt to find a method for cars going in and out of that upper lot, four of them. I'm not going to make any additional provisions for, uh, for guests. And, uh, I'm just requesting that we come back next month one last try, but that's going to be it for me.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Hold on.
I'm sorry, we've closed the public, the comment session.
With all due respect.
I've had my hand raised for 10 minutes now.
Hold on, before we have any additional public comment, Nick, can I add a couple of things to your to-do list there?
Please.
Um, there have been some questions, um, from neighbors and some concerns about snow removal, refuse removal, and storage. Um, if you wouldn't mind just including what you plan to do about those things when you come back, then we can have everything on the table at once.
So Catherine, yes, so, uh, just, let me write this down real quick. So, snow removal, trash, and storage.
Yes, those are some concerns that have been raised by butters that I just wanted to make sure we're on your radar screen.
They will be addressed for the next meeting, if I may continue.
Thank you.
And, and you, you, you need to address whether the parking by the red chair, carriage house is going to require backing into the road or not.
Sure. Not a problem, happy to.
Could, could I just ask, uh, this is a, a housekeeping question?
Just state your name, please, for the.
Sorry, this, I'm Amy Snodgrass, um, 69 Harbor Street. And, um, I'm not really familiar with the way the ZBA works, so this is why I'm asking my question. Um, so Nick is going to make a new proposal. Is there any way that we could have access to that, to see it?
Yeah, so the, the, the challenge is, is, is we need to get the proposal several weeks in advance of the meeting. Um, and then it would go in town hall, and people can ask to see it at town hall. Um, so the question is, Nick, can you get all that done before our March meeting, or should we continue to April?
I'll get it done before March, and, um, I'll tell you, like I attempted before, I sent an email out to, uh, everybody that sent me an email in the first place early with my, uh, verbal proposal and the changes. I, I, I think most people had seen that because I got a lot of responses from it. So when I decided to change the scope, I addressed everybody that was on the initial email to me that was letting me know how much opposition they had for it. So I tried to attach everybody. I said, hey, everybody, I'm going from six to three. I'm dropping the parking spaces from 12 to eight. I'm putting a fence on 127, and I'll see you folks at the meeting. Um, I, I thought that that was in good faith, that, hey, this guy's trying to, I heard, he heard everything, I'm trying to address it. I will try to further address the concerns and try to make everybody happy. I'm going to come back next month. I'm going to get the plans out to you as soon as possible that show three units with three bedrooms in elevator, where the storage will be, how I'll remove, how I'm going to remove snow, where I'll keep the trash, how I'm going to have storage, I'm going to have screening for the Morton's, I'm going to have, uh, screening for Filio, and just so everyone knows, I'm not, I'm not reducing the number of units further, though. That's what I'm not going to do.
You can cross screening off for the Morton's.
We, we never, we never talked about that.
So please, you don't.
Well, if, if there's anything you guys do want, please let me know before the next meeting, please.
My, my only request is if you could, could hand the, your, um, your new, your next proposal into the ZBA in time that, um, that we could go to the town hall and look at it.
Who, 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 who's, uh, who's speaking, just so I know?
Sorry, this is Amy Snodgrass. I'm, I'm the one who asked the original question about, um, about looking at the plans. Um, I'm, I'm sure it's not a new thing for the, for the zoning board.
So the new, the new plan, just so you know, I'm going to get, I'm going to speak to the architect as soon as possible, have him reconfigure the floor plans, reconfigure everything I possibly can, just so you know, everyone, I'm not changing the exterior of the building at all. So I'm going to still have three units of three bedrooms each, and there's going to be the carriage house in the back. The parking is going to still be four and four. I'm going to reconfigure it for safety concerns. But I will get it to town hall as, as soon as possible, and I will also forward it to everybody that was on that email originally, as quickly as I have it, in addition to getting it to the ZBA.
Madam Chair, procedural point, please.
Yes, sir.
If the applicant is going to refile the application with new plans, everybody needs adequate notice. And he is not, he's not negotiating with everybody he's talking to here. He's not even negotiating with the board. This is just, it's inappropriate procedure. This is up the board to grant the permit, not for him to negotiate with 50 people.
Right, so, so he is filing amendments to the plans under the original application. It's a continued public hearing. We will hear it at the next meeting. Whatever he presents to us, whether it's what we want or not, we will go through all of the aspects of the requirements to issue a special permit and determine whether it satisfies those requirements or not. Just because he's saying he's doing A doesn't mean that A is acceptable to the board.
Thank you. I'm incredibly glad to hear that. I'd also point out that the burden is on the applicant to satisfy all these requirements, not on us. And thank you for letting me interject briefly again.
Thank you.
May I just, uh, address, um, the, I, I, I haven't spoken all night. My name is Pam Kenworthy, and I live at 1 Harbor Street. Um, uh, this is my first time speaking at a meeting, but I, I, I just had to respond to the board member's statements that she thought that our concerns about safety were just made up for the purposes of this argument, and I just really have an issue with that statement. Um, I never received an email from Lisa Wilson. I've lived on this corner for 13 years. I have a seven-year-old son. I've written a letter to the board about it. It doesn't, um, uh, this doesn't appear that everyone has read it, but, um, I am absolutely interested in anyone who is trying to improve the safety condition of this intersection. I have long been dreaming of having speed bumps on Harbor Street. Um, I've heard some other ideas from people that are feeding tonight, um, and I just feel like it scares me that a board member would be so quick to dismiss our concerns as if they were made up for the purposes of, you know, that they were disingenuous in some way. I, I, I just, I, I really take issue with that. It is a very dangerous intersection. I'm a seven-year-old boy. Um, I, you know, we are all very concerned about the safety in that, in that intersection.
Let me be clear here. I did not say anyone was making anything up. I said there was a clear disconnect in the stories. That was what I said, that there was a disconnect in what Ms. Wilson said versus what the rest of the group seemed to be.
You implied that these were, these were concerns that were made up as posturing as part of our protest to this, to this application, and I find that really disturbing.
I said it was concerning that there was a disconnect in the narratives, ma'am. I did not accuse anyone of making anything up.
Uh, yeah, I, I think a lot of people heard differently.
Who's that?
I would like to speak.
Um, we've closed the public hearing portion. We've moved on to the applicant's response. You can speak at the next meeting. Is it possible to just ask next question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Nick, I thought you were removing the porches.
Excuse me?
I thought you were removing the porches.
Nope, not at all.
Since when?
Since the, since the origin, since the, um.
So are you enclosing them, or will they remain the way they are?
There will be no change to the exterior at all.
So the original plan said you were enclosing the side porch, and you're now saying you're not. Is that correct?
If you look at the plans that were submitted for the three units, the, the, the porches are not enclosed.
Okay.
I think there's a lot of misconceptions about what's happening, what's not happening. I think maybe it's a good idea to go back and get some really finite plans that I can share with everybody, so everyone knows what's happening.
The more specific, the better, I feel.
Okay, thank you, Robyn.
Uh, at the request of the applicant, I move to continue the application of Nicholas Harris Mac Holding Services LLC for a special permit under section 6.1.2 and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, and other relief as may be necessary to alter, expand, or change an existing non-conforming hotel inn and single-family residential dwelling use to a non-conforming, I guess it's now three-unit multifamily and a single-family dwelling use in accordance with the plans at 2 Harbor Street, assessors map number one, lot number 65 in District E, filed with the town clerk on December 16, 2020. And the application is continued to March 24th, 2021. And, um, the deadline for filing the decision will be extended to June 30th, 2021.
Uh, could I say one last thing? Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your input. If anybody would like to give me very specific feedback, I'd love to hear it. And as soon as possible, before I do submit this finite final plan. So if anybody has special requests, real opinions that I can deal with outside of what I told you I'm going to present, let me know. And please, this was not easy for me. I don't like hearing all this. I don't like fighting with folks. Just email me. Please don't call me after the meeting.
Hold on. Do I have a second on my motion?
Second.
Who is that, John?
Sure, yeah.
I'll take a roll call vote. Um, John?
Yes, approved.
Brian? James?
Approved to continue.
Catherine?
What was?
Approved to continue.
And Sarah approves to continue. So this application is continued to March 24th. And I expect, Nick, that you will get revised plans to the town clerk.
ASAP.
Two weeks before the meeting.
I'm gonna do my best.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Misplaced my second page of the agenda. So we, next on the agenda, we have a number of minutes to review. I'm trying to, does anybody have that page of the agenda available?
I have it.
Yeah, so what minutes are we supposed to be reviewing? I think it was October.
28.
Yeah?
November 18th, December 16th, and January 20, 2021.
Um, where do people stand on having reviewed those minutes?
I, I read them. I had no problems. I had no issues with any of the minutes. James speaking. That was Brian speaking before James.
Catherine, have you reviewed them?
I haven't read the January minutes, but the other ones I've reviewed and they're fine.
Okay. John?
I also have not read the January minutes, but I've read the others.
Okay. Um, we'll hold off on the January then. Um, I move to approve the minutes from October 28th, 2020, November 18th, 2020, and December 16th, 2020. Do I have a second?
Excellent. James?
James Mitchell seconds. Um, take a roll call vote. James?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Brian? Brian?
Approve.
Catherine?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. What was next on the agenda?
Overview of State 40B Handbook.
I'm going to suggest that based on the hour, we will not discuss that tonight. Is that acceptable to the board?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Second.
And I think the other next item would be if there was anything else people wish to raise. We do have an appeal of an administrative decision for our next meeting with respect to 48 Central Street. And we have new applications that I haven't seen. Anything people want to raise?
Is this related to the parking and the the plantings?
The plantings.
At 48 Central?
Yeah.
Okay.
So our decision did not, our decision said that the structure had to be built in accordance to the plans. There was no mention of landscaping. Anna Butter has requested that they force them to do the landscaping now. And the building inspector did not issue an order, and they have appealed.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, Sarah, just one other thing, are you, you're saving this chat here on the side? You need to save that, I think.
How do I save that?
I don't know. I, well, let me see. I think I can figure it out. Hold on. I might be able to save it for you, to email it to you.
Yeah.
I just saved it.
Oh, can you send it to me?
Yeah, I mean, you just have to click the link, and it says save chat.
Yeah, that's what I just did.
What link? More? Do I hit more?
The three dots.
Three dots.
At the bottom of the chat, but you might want to do it at the end of the meeting.
I can just, yeah, I I downloaded it, so I can just email it to you.
Yeah. Oh, I see it. Okay. Okay, well, yeah, if you can send it to me, I'm having challenges, a little disconcerted.
That's helpful for me too, Sarah.
Okay.
In case I missed someone, and I did miss a few someones.
Don't worry, there'll be.
Given that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. I know this was a tough night.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yep.
Thank you, Sarah.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.